to industrial and to rezone the property from EX mixed use to I-1 industrial district. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to hear this item tonight? Okay, is there anyone on the commission who prefers to hear this item tonight? Carol? Okay, we will leave that item on the public hearing. So now I will read the public hearing, or I'm sorry, the consent items. Item number one, request from Park Indy LLC for the following regarding property located in the vicinity of 3140 Indianola Avenue, determination as to whether the request to rezoning is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Amend the comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to community mixed use and rezone it from a neighborhood district to a neighborhood mixed district to allow the development of the property with new multiple household residential units. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item? Seeing none, that will remain on the consent agenda. Item number two, a request from Meridian at Gray's Landing LLC for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, Meridian, for property located at 425 Southwest 11th Street for type-two design alternatives, to allow a primary frontage entrance and ground story elevation to sit approximately three to five feet above the sidewalk elevation, and to allow 0% transparency for visible basements on each street-facing facade. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission?
Yes.
Okay. Item number two will be pulled from consent and will be heard on the public hearing tonight. Item number three on the consent agenda is request from Dunto LLC for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, elevate townhomes for property located at 508 Indianola Avenue for the following type-two design alternatives, to waive the requirement to meet the front built-to-zone, waive the requirement to meet the street-side built-to-zone of 10 to 15 feet on the southern building, reduce the minimum rear setback, allow a garage entrance on the front facade, waive the required minimum 20-feet depth of occupied space on full floors on the front facade, allow parking to be within 20-feet depth of occupied spaces on the front facade. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item tonight? Okay, seeing none. Items one and three will remain on the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll move.
Thank you, Emily. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we will start the public hearing with item number two. Nick Tarpey will present from the staff. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpey, planning staff. If this site plan looks familiar, this address looks familiar, that's because it is. So this site came before the commission back in October of 2021, and then they got an approved site plan back in May of 2022. There's been some new information about some of the site conditions at the site that have resulted in a revision to the site plan, and so that's necessitated some of the design changes that we're going to be talking about here tonight. So I'll try to walk through that and try to keep that relatively brief, and then we can have time for questions. All right. So contextually here, this is in the Gray's Station area of the city, so south of MLK, north of Raccoon River. We've got Gray's Lake Park that sits about a quarter-mile, half-mile to the south here. People might be familiar with this lot. If you're looking at the aerial up here, this collection of buildings, this is Cityville, and then up here we have the Nexus Development. There's a development going on up here at the corner of Tuttle and Southwest 11th. This site has been vacant for a while. The people have maybe walked or driven or ridden by this area en route to Gray's Lake Park. There was a large mound of soils here that was here historically. The development team, when they knew that they were going to have to grade and excavate at the site, that that was going to have to be removed. That was something that they were totally planted for. After removal of those soils, however, they had to test native soils that were underneath there. Upon testing those native soils, there were some issues with some of the stability of the soils and then contaminants as well, and so basically they had to consult with IDNR as well as their environmental consultant team, basically to try to figure out, okay, how are we going to stabilize the site? You know, we still want to go forward with construction, but what's going to be the path forward here? The solution they came up with was basically to add two feet of soils to the entire site, so not just in specific areas, but really to stabilize the entire site, they wanted to cover it in two-feet-of-soil blanket for the entire parcel. So the result of that basically is that all the site improvements that are proposed in the building are basically raised and elevated two feet. So what's proposed now is really the exact same as what was proposed before in terms of how the building sits, where the parking goes, the tenant amenities, things like that. Everything is just sitting two feet above that. And so with that, that has brought on the necessitated relief, the relief that they're asking for. So the ground story and the entrance elevation is literally the same as it was, it's just two feet higher, and so basically that condition has brought on what we call a visible basement, and per the code, the definition is in between one-and-a-half feet and a half of the basement elevation that's above the average grade of the site. And so we'll look at the elevations, and we can take a look at that, and I'll show you what that means in practice. So here's the site, and then here is just a more detailed view of the site, showing the landscape plan, just kind of see what this would maybe look like from an aerial at full build-out. And then here's the elevation, so here's really, I think, what is of interest tonight. So the relief that this group is requesting, that the applicant is requesting, is, see this, there's kind of this strip of concrete here, this band of precast. So for part of this front, for part of both frontages, basically by definition, that basement meets the definition of what we call a visible basement, and if you're a visible basement, you have to provide transparency or windows, glazing, at the same level as a first-story or second-story, et cetera. And so the request tonight is to not provide any glazing for this area. As staff, we looked at it, we thought about it a little bit. We're supportive of the request for a few reasons. I think along the 11th Street frontage, where this is also in effect, they've got a ramping system, they've got a sloped planning plan, they've got an entrance that is relatively strong at the corner, that anchors the corner, they've got a pretty high degree of occupied space here, so the frontage is activated in a different way, they've got a patio that spills out on the Southwest 11th Street. So we felt, especially on the 11th frontage, that all of those elements combined, they really mitigate that effect of the entrance and that ground story being raised two feet higher. And then a little bit similarly here, this is the Murphy Street frontage on the south side of the building, public street, public-facing facade here. Generally, as staff, we looked at it, and we noticed that as you head east, really that visible basement, it disappears and then it goes away entirely as you head east. And so as staff, we didn't really feel that it was necessary or maybe appropriate to try to add glazing, or maybe it wouldn't take up the entire facade here on the south side. That coupled with the planning plan, we've got some balconies out there, we felt that that was rhythmic enough, and it really kind of met the intent of the ordinance. We don't feel like there's really a blank wall, especially on the south side of the building. So that was really the crux of staff being supportive of that relief. So that's really what I wanted to dig into tonight. Are there any questions about any of that at all?
When you say unstable, what do you mean by unstable?
In terms of, I guess, I'll let the applicant talk about it a little bit more, they have the soils report in their possession, but basically, I think, just the ability of the building to sit on the ground, basically.
Sorry, just quick, is the basement really the parking garage?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, great point, Carol. So that was another reason, I think, why, staff, we looked at that, and we didn't feel that glazing was necessarily necessary there, because you're not looking at occupied space at all. It would be a parking garage, that's not activated space necessarily.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other examples that are similar to this in the city?
I can't think of any offhand. Jason, do you know of any?
Yeah, I mean, nothing specifically comes to mind, but I don't, I think you would find buildings around town that have varying extensions of kind of a solid base that extends above, so I don't know that that would be unusual. So I don't know if that answers your question.
I just thought of one, sorry. If you remember the High Street Lofts project that came through, like a month ago, to the commission, like 16th and High, 40-unit apartment building, four stories. So that ground story, that was, or that lowest story that was facing High Street, that was actually below average grade, and so that was a basement, it was visible, and so they did have to provide transparency, which they did.
I think the difference on that one, though, is on that street side, that was like, there was like a whole stretch of that facade, the whole floor was exposed on one side.
Right.
And this one, it's, on every facade, there's kind of a taper on your side of the building.
And the reason for this is because of the additional two-foot of soil?
Two feet, yeah, exactly. So the whole site has basically been raised, so you know, you think of a site, we're adding two feet on top of it, and then everything gets lifted up, if that makes sense.
Gotcha, yep, yep, that does, thank you.
How does that raising the site affect the property to the east, if at all?
The applicant didn't say that that hasn't really, they haven't raised any concerns, I guess, to the properties to the east. So I'll let the applicant speak to that. I don't think that anything has changed in terms of stormwater management or things like that. It's all going to be treated the same.
Has the large pile of earth been removed?
Yes, it has, yes. So I think that was removed over the summer. The applicant can get more of a timeline, but they knew that they were going to have to do that first, so they tested that, removed that, and then they got into the native soils that were underneath, and that's what has necessitated this design change.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commission, from staff? Okay, seeing none. The applicant is allowed 10 minutes to present. Be sure to state your name and address and sign in when you, you can sign in when you're done speaking.
Was that last part, sign after?
Yeah, you can do the written part afterwards, so.
Okay, perfect, awesome. So my name's Olivia Kluck, and I'm with Simonson &amp; Associates. We're, over on Ingersoll, we're talking about the Meridian project. I think Nick did a pretty good job of summarizing the project in its entirety. To answer some of the questions that came up before, yes, the overburden has been taken away, then that allowed us in June to test deeper into the native soils there that had five pockets of lead that were contaminated and needed special treatment. So the developer worked with IDNR and the EPA to come up with a remediation program of how we're going to handle this. So then it really entails them having to treat it onsite and in the hole, and to eliminate hitting some of those more deep pockets of lead, that's what raised us to the two feet to try and mitigate some of that, but we will be covering the entire site with two feet of clean soil to kind of create a nice buffer. Do you have any other specific questions?
Can you run us through the sloping landscape strategy and like how?
Yes.
How much coverage it'll provide to that raised wall that you're talking about?
Yep, so specifically on Murphy Street, where it's that longer stretch, we, since we bring it up, those two feet, we are then going to slope the earth back up to the building to mitigate as much of that precast that will be exposed. So at the worst case at the end, it is three feet, and at the east side, it's down to eight inches of exposed precast. So we're trying to mitigate it as much as we can. We will also have extensive planting, so then the pedestrian walking by has a more welcoming environment that they will be experiencing, so it's not a precast wall, it's not a bunch of stairs, it's welcoming and trying to create as much of a soft environment as we can.
Can you walk us through the rationale on that same long stretch to, the patios are actually executed as balconies there, so just a few feet off the ground, instead of actually accessing the public way and the sidewalk there?
Yes, so we had originally showed those as, they've always been balconies, but they had stairs down to address that public way, and at that point, we felt that it was an amenity, and there's always been a security component to that. So even though we are providing those stairs down to that public way, there was a fence to provide security, and the higher that they got up, the more the amenity part started to fade away, and it became a bigger security, and again, trying to create a positive environment for the pedestrian walking down the street. It was becoming a zoo of metal steps and railing all the way down that 450-foot stretch. So we felt that providing plantings and overplanting was a better solution for that.
Hi, I'm a civilian, I'm not
Okay.
an engineer or architect. Did you ever consider providing better pictures, 3D renderings or elevations that really drove that point home because it's really hard for my brain to sort of understand?
It's complicated, that.
Especially, you said that, you know, at the corner, it's going to be this great grand entrance or whatever.
Yep.
It's hard for me to see that in this. You don't have anything, frankly, that available, do you, that shows what you're talking about?
Not at this time. We did originally render those buildings, but we had not put in the time to re-render this yet, but we could definitely get some drawings and mockups for it.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's obviously too late now.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering how you're so confident, frankly, that
Of that experience.
what you're proposing is going to look like you say it's going to look like?
Yes.
Maybe I'm just used to seeing a little bit more robust presentation?
Yep.
Than this?
Would it?
Especially when it relies on the aesthetics of covering up precast.
Would it be helpful, maybe, if we go to the landscape sheet, and then you can kind of, Nick, could you help her?
That really, it won't help me, but maybe others.
Well, I think it might be something that can be pointed to. I think it's sheet four, slide four, there you go. You might be able to kind of talk a little bit about what's on here in turn. Both use this as a visual, but also verbally kind of describe what's happening with the ground and what's there.
Yeah. Can I zoom on this? Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, so what is happening is at this end over here, this is when we're showing that eight inches of precast, and then it slopes all the way up to, at this point, there would be three feet of that exposed basement in precast. And what we are doing is to minimize that, again, sloping the soil up to it, but then on top of that, all of these circles and bush-like materials will be planted up against that, so not only are you just getting a grassy hill, you're getting bushes, something that will also add to that elevation and be covering that up. So then, at that point, it's really minimal, because if you can imagine that you have a slope, and then on top of it you have a bush, you're adding height, so then that exposed precast really starts to fade away.
And they're not just bushes, maybe they're colorful prairie plants and grasses, or are they bushes?
Let me get my
Just looking for a little sex appeal, I guess.
Nope, nope, I need to zoom into what we all, we have going here, but it's What else do we have? Overall, in the site, we will have some of your more canopy trees, your evergreen shrubs, you will have prairie grasses and all of those as well, and something that I probably haven't covered very well is at this point, at the corner, where everything comes together and you're having that user experience of people walking and entering that building, we are also providing additional planting beds, we'll have more of those grasses and seasonal experiences.
Is this a mechanically ventilated parking level or naturally ventilated?
It is mechanically ventilated, I believe.
So what looks like area-way openings on the south on Murphy Street, are those?
These are balconies here.
Those are balconies?
Yep.
But they're showing up in the parking level?
This
So I have some confidence that there's no openings in that lower level in that landscape area?
No, those would be balconies, so they will sit up above that landscape level.
Okay, so there's no openings from the parking level to the street?
No, so
No louvers, no?
No louvers, not on our south facade.
Okay.
A lot of that is being taken care of. We have an area well here, and I believe one over here.
Okay, so the lead concern, we're building things up, but we're digging down to provide parking, so the lead concerns at a level where the excavation for the parking level needs to be higher than the lead?
Yes, to avoid some of the deeper pockets, we are treating some of the lead, we're not eliminating, we will have to treat some of the lead and dispose of it properly.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one more topic to bring up. So the other thing that happened when you pulled the building up out of the ground two feet, the accessibility, the ramp extended in kind, right? Another, we have to ramp up now to the main entrance that much further?
The ramp?
So it seems like we've created this condition where if people arrive at the main entrance or that stairway at the corner, and somebody needs to take the accessible route from there, they have to go up the sidewalk 100 feet and then up a ramp 100 feet. I think that's a little onerous of an approach. Would a switchback ramp fit so that you could have the access point of the ramp and like cut that distance down in half, so an accessible route could be provided at the same location as your main entrance?
Doug, I can let you answer more specifically on what would fit, but yes, we are showing that the ramp entrance is here, we would be sloping up. We did minimize how much we had to extend it with those two feet by increasing the slope, if I'm correct, from the prior plan?
Is it about the same? Doug Saltzke, we're Engineering Resource Group, 2413 Grand Avenue, Des Moines. Actually, the ramp stayed about the same because originally we did not, excuse me, we kept it under 5%, not have to have handrails. That was the goal, to be less visually obtrusive, and we cannot extend it any farther north because it's a pinching triangle there, so the overall length of the ramp stayed about the same, but we increased the slope, thus had to add handrails on both sides.
Is there room to switch it back, though, in that, in your setback?
No. We mean to run it at 5% or without handrails?
No, I mean, like, just switch it, like, take it halfway out that way and halfway out back so that a person in a wheelchair could enter at the same place that a person walking could? Like, they could enter the ramp, go and switch back and have half the distance as to what you've created here?
We probably could, it'd involve retaining walls, but, yeah, I think we could probably do it, it'll be tight.
Yeah, so
Exactly. Yeah.
Can you describe a little bit, you've mentioned retaining walls, where are the retaining walls along the landscaping areas?
So at that front corner, there are a few along here that are retaining walls that would also be planters. We have some, again, along that ramp that creates another planted area. Are these? Yeah, yeah. We also have some that we had to add from raising the building over on that amenity wing, this is our outdoor amenity wing, that also had to come up to handle that. I think those are the major ones that were added.
So on the Murphy Street Oh, sorry, on the Murphy Street side, the south side of the building, about how far down would you say the retaining wall goes?
This portion.
Is it just that? Okay.
Yep, just this portion right here.
So at the end of that retaining wall, what's the difference in height from where the soil ends next to the foundation to the sidewalk? Like, what's that slope like after the retaining wall?
Yeah, five to six feet.
Okay.
Which I think the elevation kind of might show us some of those.
Maybe slide seven?
In an elevation format. And included in that would then be your plantings to soften that edge.
Okay, does the commission have any other questions? Seeing none, we can hear from those in favor of the, anybody in the audience who are in favor of this item can come forward. If there are any one who is neutral or opposes, you may come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and hear from the commission. Any discussions?
I'd like to add a friendly amendment to that. So one thing, I want to note that, I guess, I kind of appreciate that in the landscape solution this team tried to bring forward, an alternative instead of just an exception to eliminate the glass requirement, and I think teams aren't consistently doing that, so I just want to note that. I think the pedestrian ramp, I'm not going to add a condition about that or suggest a condition about that, but I would suggest the design team to consider that, that the accessible route could be more sensitively developed so that it's not so much longer than the stair route. But I think what's really important is, on the long facade of this building, it's 500-foot long facade, relying completely on landscape for the pedestrian experience for the public realm. In best practice, not per code, but in best practice, you would want to have real pedestrian activity or interest developed at like a 30-foot rhythm, and we've got like 500 feet of no access, no place for a pedestrian to enter or leave. Per code, on a primary facade, we would say the max distance without a major entry is supposed to be 100 feet. This is not deemed a primary street frontage, but that's a rhythm in code. So getting to the friendly amendment, I would propose that any Level 1 balconies are not articulated as balconies that do not reach the ground without pedestrian access, but rather provided stairs, and if the design team feels that that is too many stairs, maybe eliminating a couple of those balconies would be fine. So my amendment would be a condition to say that a minimum of eight balconies be converted to walk-up stair access so that the public realm sidewalk is connected to the first-level space. I think that's an unacceptable alternative to provide for this glazing that we're eliminating of the requirement.
I won't accept it.
No?
No.
Madam Chair, may I ask, make a suggestion, or not a suggestion, but a comment? I'm looking at the screen, and I hope everyone else can too. I know that the developer has found a lot of problems, you know, perhaps unexpected, and come up with a solution that seems to be reasonable within their budget. I'm looking at this drawing, and frankly, here's this retaining wall on the, kind of on the southern side, on, I think, the southwest corner of the building, and actually, I rather like it there because it's a big feature, it captures your eye, and it calls attention to the main entrance to the building, which is what, you know, architecture is supposed to do. I think, I'm not an architect, but you know, as a walker-by, I would figure out, there's where I'm supposed to go if I want into the main entrance, so that's a comment.
Okay, so the motion that we have is from Francis to move staff, so seeing how the friendly amendment was not accepted, we'll vote on the motion unless there's any other discussion.
Can I at least ask one question about the amendment? I guess I'm not fully understanding. So you're saying that roughly half of the balconies, you're looking for stairways into what are private residences that still connect on to the public what are private residences that still connect on to the public sidewalk? Is that?
Yeah. You know, a partially elevated balcony is a pretty odd condition in the, in a sidewalk condition, you know? To have a balcony that's only suspended three or four feet or less above the ground.
Yes, you're basically?
In our public realm would be much more activated if there was actually an entry point.
So, you're basically functionally requiring these to be like sort of stoops? Like, if I go to row houses?
Stoop would be great. But I think, you know, per cost, I think they were suggesting they were going to do it out of aluminum steps. I'm not saying that that's, that they need to be overburdened to like create a, you know, a nice substantial concrete stoop with a rail or something like that. That would be great.
So, you're anticipating the look of this would be more like, what is the, on High Street at 15th, on those types of aluminum steps that are there or something? Is that what you're?
Yeah, don't go anywhere. In the landscape? I think that would be acceptable.
What's that address?
It's Hatchess thing right on the corner there, across from the hospital.
Nick, could you just clarify, the previous design that was approved, were these units walk-ups at that, with the previous design? I mean, not walk-ups, did they have, that was a little confusing, I think. Did?
Was there, you're saying there was balconies that kind of connected down?
Had steps down or not? Were these pre, when the commission saw this previously, was this?
I believe so. I could, I could pull it up real quick if you want. Yeah.
I think she knows. Were you shaking your head yes?
Yes.
Yeah, so they were, yeah.
They were at ground level or in the lower?
They did not have steps previously. I just couldn't remember on this project. I mean, we have had a lot of projects where we do have asked for.
No, I believe she said they did have.
When you spoke to my question, you said you had steps, but you have more steps now because of the two-foot increase in elevation?
Before, there were, they were always balcony, there were balconies, and they always had steps down on the previous. Previously, there were balconies with steps down.
Yes, okay. Thank you. So, so yes, the previous version had steps down, which that's, I just want to clarify just because I think we, just as the commission's, you know, discussing this, so, because we do look at and think about access on facades, and often, we do have kind of a wa, you know, if we're not going to have a main entrance on a facade, a walk-up style unit is something we do look for. So, that is a change that maybe we didn't, as staff, point out in our presentation that these were previously stepped. But I think the applicant, you know, explained that that elevation, they felt that change had made it challenging for them to continue on with that model. I was just trying to clarify the discussion, what's been shared, so thank you.
So, the motion is for staff, with these sort of oddly elevated balconies with no stairs, is what, so this drawing, where, I think I agree with Dan, where like you sort of have a really long stretch of no walk-up when we had walk-up before. That's the motion?
The motion is staff right now, because Francis, the motion is staff because Francis did not accept the friendly amendment. So, if you would like something with the amendment, we can vote on staff, on Francis' motion, and then if that fails, we can.
I've got nothing better, so.
But to clarify, the answer is yes. That is the motion.
This is a question more for clarification. So, in the original design, the steps were there, without the elevation change or anything, correct? Or with the elevation change?
Yeah, the, the building was two, two feet close to the ground in general, and so they felt the design previously had those steps, and this, the change in elevation is what's driven them to walk away or change that aspect of the project.
I would like to point out that the reason it was changed because of environmental concerns, so therefore, I'm deferring to staff and the changes that are accommodating the fact they had to increase their depth for two feet. So, I'd like to have a motion voted on.
Okay. All right. We're going to vote on the motion to move staff. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I'm sorry, I was, I'm sorry.
It's the motion to move staff.
If you're in favor of the staff recommendation, then raise your hand. Motion carries. We do need to know if, we have eight affirmative, so that's the majority of people, all of them, who know that people are abstaining.
Okay, all those opposed? Raise your right hand. Anyone abstaining?
Yeah, Andy's, I just heard Andy.
Didn't see out there.
And thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, we're moving on to item number four. Request from Wesco Hull LLC for the following regarding property at 2101 Hull, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM, to amend Plan DSM for the future land use classification for the eastern portion of the property from low-density residential to industrial, and to rezone the property from I-1 Industrial District to N-3A Neighborhood District to I-1 Industrial District to allow use of the property for a use that includes office and industrial components. And for the staff tonight, we have got Catherine. Thank you.
Thanks. Chair, members of the commission, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city of Des Moines. The item before you, as mentioned, is located at 2101 Hull Avenue. This is located on a corner with Delaware Avenue. The property has a split zoning on it. The western portion of the property is industrial, while the eastern portion of the property is N-3A. And so, the request before you tonight is for the rezoning of the property, the subject property, to be entirely I-1. A few site photos, just to give you some context. This is driving north on Delaware and then turning east on to Hull Avenue, and then also on Hull Avenue looking westward. The applicant did provide us with a site sketch. They are also going through the site plan review process at the moment. Let me see. Just another site sketch, and then I'll skip ahead. I can zoom in on the elevations if you'd like. Most of this is staying consistent, I believe. I am going to walk through a little bit of a timeline to explain how this property ended up having the split zoning on it, so bear with me a little bit. Prior to 2016, the property consisted of three parcels, all of which were zoned M-1 Light Industrial District. The eastern parcel contained a house which was considered illegal, non-conforming use in the M-1 district. I've highlighted that in the upper image that you can see on the screen. It's essentially, I just highlighted the house. We don't have the specifics of where the parcel lines were located, and this image shows the existing parcel lines today. Apologies, that's not as clear as it could be, but that's what we had available to us. On April 25th, 2016, Plan DSM was adopted. It designated the eastern por, excuse me, portion of the parcel, or excuse me, it designated the eastern parcel at the time containing the house as low-density residential, and the western properties were designated industrial. This reflected what was on the ground at the time. And during the development of Plan DSM, there was considerable conversation and attention paid to this area to ensure that the existing residential uses stayed designated as low-density residential. This was something that we heard from the neighborhood at the time, and we did our best to respect what existed. On May 23rd, 2016, a permit was issued to demolish the house, and soon after the demolition, the three parcels were combined as a single parcel. On November 21st, 2016, a site plan was approved for construction of a new building. This was permitted since the property was entirely zoned M-1 Light Industrial District at that time. And then on December 16th, 2019, the city of Des Moines adopted a new zoning map. This zoning map is required to follow and agree with the future land use map that's adopted, which was the Plan DSM land use map. Therefore, the area on the future land use map that was designated as low-density residential became zoned N-3A Neighborhood District. And then, of course, the western portion of the property was zoned I-1, again, so that the zoning map was in agreement with the comprehensive plan. With this adoption, the existing building, or, excuse me, business was allowed to continue as a legal, non-conforming use on the portion of the property that was zoned N-3A. And then, the use that we have before us tonight, the change in use of this property that is before us tonight, is what has triggered the requirement for both the new site plan, which also requires the rezoning of the eastern portion of the property. So, that's just to provide a little bit of context of how these processes and everything kind of happened concurrently, and everything ended up the way it did. So, this property is and has been industrial, is located in an aerial, area that is an industrial area predominantly along Delaware Avenue. It is adjoining a low-density residential area as well. Staff feels that in the best interests of the comp plan to retain the industrial lands that we have available for industrial uses, we would recommend approval of this request, but we have a few little comments and conditions to make, given its location against a residential While it is appropriate, it does need to refrain from any allowed outdoor storage, given the tightness of the site and just that proximity to the residential. While there are, there is an allowed outdoor storage use with supplemental use regulations, we would recommend approval, but with that caveat of a prohibition of any outdoor storage on the site. And in addition, through the site plan process, we have noted that should, in particular, should the existing residential fence in between the properties ever disappear, as well as at this time, there should be a heavy buffer, landscaping buffer installed on that eastern portion of the subject property. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them, and I'll just reiterate again, we are recommending approval with the prohibition of any outdoor storage on the subject property.
Are there any questions? Chris?
The prohibition on storage, would that actually continue beyond a sale of the property, or would that be something that is like rehashed if there's redevelopment?
It would run with the land, so it would, should it be resolved, that prohibition would continue.
Were there any comment cards from the neighbors?
Oh, I'm so sorry. So, we do have the neighborhood meeting summary. I can zoom in on that if need be. Their sign-in sheet. This is the comprehensive amendment map, and then the consent map for the rezoning request, which is where the comment cards are sent out with. So, we did receive both comment cards back in, as well as additional comments from the neighbors and others. I'm going to go ahead and zoom in on these so that you can see the comments. If I need to go closer, let me know, and I'll try to scroll at a reasonable rate.
Do you scroll up to down?
Yes. The neighborhood association is in opposition. I'm just going to scroll back up. This is the card we received from them. We also additionally received a letter from them, which is a little bit further down, so. I'll zoom back out a little bit. We received this from a neighbor. She is within the 250-foot area and is represented on the consent map in opposition. She did send in both a card as well as an email. She had some photos that she provided to us as well that are following this email, so.
The building is already built, and they're operating it as a business right now?
So, the building is already built. It recently changed hands, and the use is changing. It was previously utilized as a location for installation of aftermarket products on, I believe, predominantly motor bicycles, and then now it's being switched over for use by a cleaning company that is similar in mind to ServiceMaster or Servpro.
And they are not operating yet?
They should not be operating yet, no.
Okay, because that was my question, if we deny this, what happens to this building?
I'm going to let Jason.
But I think we, I'm not sure we know how long the building, the transition was, but there is grandfathering rights to that previous, a use similar that could reoccupy it. But I, I do think that's a fair question to, you know, ask. We have a commercial building that's got a zoning line down the middle of it due to kind of unfortunate circumstance.
The request is to store outdoor materials?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, that was, that was just a zoning condition that we're suggesting. They don't have any plans to do outdoor storage, as we understand it, but we would like that to be a zoning condition, just given how small the site is, there isn't a really good area for it.
So, what we're being asked is simply make the entire property I-1?
That's correct. Which the prop?
Requesting to store materials?
No, that's just a zoning condition that we are suggesting be applied.
Question, so, I-1 is predominantly focused on outdoor storage-heavy equipment. If we do not allow that, it's simply allowing for the business to operate in the confines of the law, correct?
Well, I-1 is our light industrial zoning district, so it allows a variety of uses, some of which can be outdoor storage of equipment, or have that as an accessory use.
Right.
So, rezoning this to, and when I say rezoning this, I mean rezoning the eastern half of it to I-1, because the western half is already I-1.
Okay.
Doesn't necess, it would allow any of the uses in I-1, so.
Except for the outdoor storage?
Correct.
Okay. Do we know, so in one of the complaints, what's the practices of them getting rid of waste materials? Can they attest to that tonight?
Yeah, I think we let the applicant talk a little bit about their business model and how they operate. There was also, I think, these pictures of some, there was a plumbing permit that was issued to allow some floor drain work to be done, but that does not give the, the rights to occupy the building with the new, the new use. But they do have a right to pull a permit to do work to a building that exists. So, that's, that, that is what has caused, I think, some of the angst, thinking that they're in there.
And I guess, if there's people to speak on this tonight, I would like to know if, if it's that they're against the I-1, or if it's against, if they're really against, like, what this company in particular is going to be doing. I guess you might not know that, but we can.
I have a question for staff regarding the use. Based on the staff report, the current property is being used for warehousing as well. So, what is the change of use? Is it the type of stuff that's being stored, or what is triggering the, the change of use?
The, the change of use is the new business that has a different, it's a different type of business underneath in the zoning ordinance. There's kind of categories of, of use, and so they're, they're wanting to introduce a new, that new business model to the site, and so. And so, that is a triggering event for us in the sense of, we look at zoning, we look at the site plan, and for them to be able to introduce that, we'll have to have this rezoning change.
Out of curiosity, if they do their I-1 activities in the left half of the building, the west half, and put their offices in the right half, are they complying?
You know, we would have to sort through that with our zoning enforcement officer. That's really not an interpretation decision that the planning staff makes. I think you could set it up that, if you could divide it out, you know, if this became a two-tenant building, and there's a tenant on one side that's zoned and only using the parking and outdoor area for their part, I think you could probably get there, and then the other part would be for a different use, kind of like a strip center. But, again, I, this is really, I see this as kind of something that unfortunately, the site was being developed under the old zoning code at the same time we were making changes, and those two things didn't, didn't jive up, which is going to happen when you redo a whole zoning code and rezone the entire city.
So, just to clarify really quickly, prior to the new zoning code in 2019, was this zoned, like, M1 industrial? Is that what I saw? That is correct. It was rezoned in 2016? Yes, or 2019, so... 2019. And that rezoning map had to be in agreement with the comprehensive plan map. Okay. Which had the low-density residential in the eastern portion, which is what it was when the comprehensive plan, future land use plan map went through adoption. Right. And it was still a residential property. Okay. And then shortly after, the property was acquired, the house was demoed, and then the property, the parcels were combined. But the land use was never updated at that time. Okay. So, I mean, that's sort of, I don't know, am I reading this wrong? It's sort of a technicality where it was, it was zoned at one point as industrial, but then because it had to be in compliance with the comp plan with the new 2019 zoning code, that it reverted back almost? Am I reading that? It didn't revert, the legal non-conforming use was allowed to continue. Okay. It had grandfathered rights. But that building has been there.
Yeah, I think to boil this down as far to the bone as I can, so, at the time that we were doing the city's comprehensive plan, that was around the same time they were starting to develop this site. And so, because that was all occurring basically at the same time, those two efforts didn't really, there was a disconnect there. The underlying zoning of all three parcels, Catherine did a good job of talking about the history of the site, when we were, you know, the information that we had to develop the comp plan showed a house there, three parcels, but that all changed. But as you move forward to 2019, the new zoning has to match the comp plan map, which was created without the knowledge of knowing the development occurred in the site. I don't know if that helps at all?
Yeah. I think so. I think I'm getting it.
But does that not moot, considering the fact that Cloud Contents is a new purchaser of the site?
I think the only thing that I'm just adding is that, to understand the history of how we've ended up with a building that's split zone, that makes it really challenging to use the building now, I mean, I, so, I think that's important for the commission to consider.
In the same vein, so, had the owner, the owner that had the grandfathered rights, had they not sold the building, would they be allowed to do what this Cloud Contents wants to do, under those previous rights?
Not once the property was...
Not to change the year?
No, not, not after the, previously, before the zoning change.
Before the zoning change.
Yes. So, if you go back to 2016, when the permits were pulled, if at that time they had established this business model, that, that would have been allowed under M1, under what was called rezoning.
Right. Before.
Okay. And I think we just have a few more letters to, that haven't been seen yet. So, no worries. Okay. So, this is in connection with, we received an email from the neighborhood, the president of the Paramount Park Neighborhood Association, and then he provided us with an attachment of the email he sent in reply to the meeting invite, which he also provided us with a copy of what he received. And I can go back to any of this if we need to. And then, and then we have the letter that was in addition to the comment card from the president of the Neighborhood Association. I can go back to any cards that anyone felt they missed, or zoom in? I think we're okay? I think we're good. Okay. Thank you. All right. Is the applicant here to present?
Hello, my name is Tyler Vincent. I'm with GTG. I'm one of the designers on the project for Cloud Contents and Derek West, 6505 Merle Hay Road, Johnston, Iowa.
Hi, I'm Derek West from Cloud Contents. 2101 Hall Avenue. I can kind of clarify at least what, what Cloud Contents does. It's a personal property restoration company. So, we specialize specifically in the cleaning of contents from home or business after fires. That's like 99% of what we do. We, we do this primarily in Minnesota. We have a business, and we've been doing this also in Iowa for about the last year. And then we haul, we've been hauling it back to Minnesota to clean it, and then when the homes are done, we deliver it back here to put in the houses and businesses when it's complete. And so, that's why we decided to do the expansion here to Iowa. So, the, the cleaning methods that we use are very, we don't use any solvents or things like that. Basically, there's no cleaning agents that we use that are any more harmful than household cleaning products. One of the systems that we use for cleaning is called ultrasonics. It uses sound waves that create cavitation bubbles that help you to clean products. It's an alternative method to using solvents like you would in an industrial application when cleaning, like oily, like engines or things like that. We just happen to use it on, on virtually everything that we can in a, in a fire damaged situation. So, I mean, from a usage standpoint, it's going to be fairly similar, I guess, to the previous occupier of the building. The back half of the building will use, be used for storage, just as it was previously. The only difference is, is the front half of the building will be cleaning the contents in there, rather than they were working on cars, you know? Which I would assume would have exhaust issues and use gas, or fuel, or oil, or things like that. Really, the things that we do is, as far as like, an odor issue or anything like that, the, the building smells extremely clean. That's what we are as a cleaning company, so, I don't, we don't do anything. I think someone said that they seen that we did, like, biohazard or something like that. I also have a different company in Minnesota that, called 24 Restore, that does full-service restoration, and that company does do some of those things, but Cloud Contents doesn't do that. The only thing that they do is specialize in the process of personal property after fire. So, we don't really deal with any of those, like, biohazard type of situations. So, we've, we have done some work on the building, I think. I wanted to sort of address that, and I knew that there was potentially an issue, but I had already invested in the purchase of the building, and so, the additional money that I spent to do some of the plumbing things, it was obviously a risk for me, but I've already, I'm pretty much all in on the purchase of the building already, so it felt like a minor risk at that point. So, I've never gone through this before, so I hope that I answered at least what I think were some of the issues that had previously come up, but I'm happy to ask, answer any other questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant?
If this is denied tonight, will you have to put the building back on the market? Can you operate out of it under these current zoning laws or conditions?
I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, obviously, the back half of the building is zoned residential. I mean, we're not going to live in it, so, I mean, I don't know how that would work. So, yes, it would be extremely, extremely difficult. I mean, it's a, we paid $3.2 million for the building, so it would be, it would be catastrophic, for sure. You know, one of the main reasons for us moving to Iowa is we were hauling everything back to Minnesota A, but we, we ran out of space in Minnesota, so the, the opportunity was to expand there, expand here. We thought it was better to expand here. We think we provide a pretty amazing service, you know, to the, the people after they, you know, deal with a disaster, you know? You know, our tagline is saving memories. So, you know, what we try to do is, you know, save the things that, you know, people love after going through really catastrophic things in their lives. And, and so, that's what we, we pride ourselves in. We provide, we pride ourselves in doing that quickly and immediately. We, we do clean their laundry. We clean things to get them, even if they have to live in a hotel, to get them back, living the best they can after dealing with a really horrible situation. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know what we would do. I mean, we would have to just continue to operate in Minnesota, and then, yes, we would have to sell the building, you know? So, it's, it's certainly an unfortunate situation, you know? I mean, I used a local realtor that was, I got him as a recommendation from some, from a person I'd been working with for, for 20 years in Minnesota. And, you know, I haven't bought a lot of buildings in my life, so you just kind of rely on what those people tell you as professionals, and, you know, it's just an unfortunate scenario. We almost didn't close on the building, but then everyone assured me that things were And that's just kind of what happened, and it's, it's a, it's a very, very unfortunate situation. But I think it's a, I don't think there's a lot of difference between the business that was there and what we are. I think it's, it's much better. Obviously, they were working on automobiles, and, you know, we won't be doing that, we'll just be cleaning things. So, we're a cleaning company, we like to keep things clean. So, you know, I can assure the, the neighbors that it will be, it'll be taken care of. We take a lot of pride. We spent a lot of money on this building. We want it to be a showpiece for us. We have, we had plans for 20 other companies around the country to come and, and see the building. We kind of set the standard for what we do, and people travel to come and see what we do. So, for us, it's a, it's a beautiful building, and that's one of the reasons why we bought it. We could have bought other buildings, but we thought this one was, would be the best showpiece for us and, and what we do.
Okay, thank you. Andrew?
Do, did you say, or, do you have any problem with the city's probation of outdoor storage?
No, we, we don't have any intention of storing anything outdoors. We kind of knew that from the beginning, so we had, we have no intention of storing anything outdoors. I mean, other than, you know, trucks that would just be parked normally.
Is there a, since it seems like some of the concerns are with respect to off-gassing or toxicity of the materials that you're using, and it sounds like what you're doing isn't actually chemically reactive at all in many cases, is there any threshold that you could recommend that would be acceptable for you to ensure that there aren't any toxic materials used that could still be a condition of operation that could be applied, or to say, hey, we'll rezone this I-1, outdoor storage is one restriction, you aren't going to do outdoor storage? There's a level of, you know, is there an MSDS sheet threshold that could be used in some way to say, and we won't use anything above this, is, is a condition to ensure that the concerns of the neighborhood are met, while still allowing you to operate in a way that sounds like you're really doing sustainable cleaning, which is very, very positive, and we should have more of?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not an expert as far as, like, what level is what level. I just know that we use the products, and our people have to use them every day, and so, they're just, they're, they're non-harmful. I'm, I'm, I could provide the MSDS sheets, no problem, for all those things. But again, we, they use them every single day, and they're, they're simple cleaning detergents that are used. I, I like to say no more harmful than Dawn dish soap, because that's really about the level. It's, it's really about other things. When you do cleaning, it's basically three things: chemical action, heat, agitation, and time. So, if you increase any one of those things, it makes cleanability much better. So, for instance, when I talk about ultrasonics, like, we use ultrasonics. The beauty of ultrasonics is you could take something that was hand-painted, but if you, if you cleaned it by hand, you would pull, like, the paint off. But with ultrasonics, you just put it in a pre-wash, you put it in the wash, and through, it runs, oops, excuse me, runs sound waves through there, which creates the cavitation bubbles, which creates that level of agitation, and it pulls the soil off. So, it's just, it's just new technology in cleaning, and it's, it's fast, it's efficient, and it's, it's non-harmful. You know, there's a great, one of the, when I bought this machine, I did a lot of research in it, and Jay Leno owns one of these, you know Jay Leno, but he, would you, they used to have to use solvents to clean motors, you know, because of all the grease and things like that. You can't dispose of these solvents. Well, Jay Leno has a machine from this company, and he puts an entire motor engine block in this thing, and, and like, turns it on, and it like, comes out perfectly clean, and you don't have to use all of those solvents. We're not cleaning engine blocks. We're just cleaning normal household and business contents that have, you know, smoke on them. So...
I had one question.
I would, I would be more than happy to provide MSDS sheets for it, but as far as...
I'm just saying, if, if there is a way to come up with a restriction that the city is happy with, that can assure people that, look, this isn't toxic, this is actually within those parameters, that seems like it may address everyone's concerns, that's my question.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think we figured out the process, so it sounds like, what is it, the Hytrix, Suprex, Sonic? What is it?
Oh, it's all, it's called Ultrasonics.
Ultrasonics, okay.
It's like, so, to, to give you an easy visual for it, if you ever went to a jewelry store and a jewelry cleaner, and they clean your ring, and you stick your ring in that tiny little machine, they turn it on, this is that same exact thing, it's just big. Same exact, it's a giant jewelry cleaner is what it is.
Gotcha. Okay, and then, what happens to the waste, or the soot, or the dirt that comes off of those products? How do you dispose of it, I guess?
I mean, that, it, it goes down the drain. I mean, it's, you know, different, you know, obviously, there's, you know, there's soot at varying levels. The one thing is, is like, if the soot's too bad, it's not salvageable or cleanable, so those things get thrown away. So, the only time we get a hold of the, the contents to be able to clean them, if it's not that bad. Okay? Because if the soot level is super high, it's, it's not going to be cleanable. It's going to be, it's going to be deemed unsalvageable by an insurance company, and the... It's going to be, it's going to be deemed unsalvageable by insurance company, and those things will be thrown away and put in the landfill. So, when it comes to us, it's typically on a very low level of soot.
And then, how, sorry, I'm just trying to formulate all this. How does the business come to you? Are they referred to you by insurance? And then, my, one more question, sorry. Is it common practice for the soot to go down in the drain? Is that a okay or condone by the EPA? That was my last one.
It's, it's common with every restoration company that I know that does what we do, all the ones in Minnesota primarily. We also get, uh, we get our businesses, yes, from insurance companies, but our primary customer are other restoration companies in and around Iowa. So, one of the things that we offer, it's, there's a high barrier to entry, to getting into doing contents. You've, obviously, with this building, you have to have a lot of storage. You have to have people with an expertise in doing this. And, and, how I got into contents was my restoration company did contents, and I couldn't ever make any money doing it, because we couldn't get busy enough. We weren't specialized in it. And so, by doing that, we, we were just extremely unprofitable, because we weren't efficient at doing it. So, I had to make a simple decision. I either had to go all into contents business, or just get out of the business. And we made the decision to go all into the business. So, what we decided to do was, yes, do the contents for our other restoration company, but we also went and offered the service to other restoration companies, so then they would be able to compete with some of the bigger players. And so, we went out, we marketed the entire state of Minnesota, and we got a lot of business from doing that. And all of those businesses, yes, they all do it. They, that's, it would be common practice.
Thank you.
Carol?
Hi, just a couple of questions, again, regarding your process. Are you guys in any hazardous material coverings when they're doing this, or are they in their civvies?
Nope, no. I mean, if they're on the, on the, at the work site, they will typically wear respirators and sometimes suits when they're on the site, but when they're in the shop, no.
No. Is this water intensive, your business, when you're not using the super shaker? Is there a lot of water involved?
It's really, no.
No?
Not a ton. No.
No. Okay. You said trucks would be parked outside. Are those big trucks, or are those like, trucks that guys use to come to work?
Yeah, like, there'd be vans, like a van.
A van, a marked van?
Yeah.
Is that how you go get the stuff, or does it come to you on a...
We also have, we also have a moving truck, like a 26-foot moving truck. We have two of those moving trucks, but those would be parked in the loading dock, sorry.
The dock, okay. And then, so it doesn't require a special certificate from IDNR or IEP or anything like that? Okay. And the fire department, do they require a special notification as far as? Okay. And, um, those dumpsters outside, are you planning on shielding them?
Uh, they won't be there.
Oh, even better.
Yeah.
Okay, rock on. Thanks.
Okay. Unless we have any other questions, we can move on to the audience. All right? Thank you so much. If there is anyone in the audience who's in favor of this item, you can come forward now. Anyone opposed to this item, you may come forward now. Please state your name and address, and sign in on the piece of paper when you are finished. You have five minutes. You can also do the sign-in when you're done, if that saves time.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Altenhofen, and I'm a resident of East 21st Street, and pretty close right there to Hall Avenue. I'm here tonight to talk about the company that bought, the restoration company that will be, that purchased Hall Avenue location. I've got a lot of concerns, environmental. I do have a lot of environmental background. I've worked with a lot of restoration claims. I've got insurance background on all of this, so I am concerned. You know, I'm concerned about discharge, air quality. He says that he only uses cleaning discharge, cleaning solutions that are not harmful. Well, my knowledge, you use more, to do a proper restoration, for smoke, mold, fire, water, all of that, there's some type of chemical that is used. Now, a lot of these chemicals are very toxic to the environment. A lot of these chemicals, and there's going to be air emission, they're going to have to release some type of gas out of this building. They're known to cause cancer. My home is 167 yards, which is equal to 500 feet, from my front door to their company. I've got concerns. I am concerned about the water contamination. I am concerned about our air quality. We have a school that's right down the street. We have 498 kids that attend Garten School, plus 30 faculty members. We have members in our neighborhood that have health issues. We need a guarantee from this company. I'd like to see the list of chemicals that they have. I want to know where the water from the drainage tube goes, that's on the east, that's on the side of Hall. Does that go to the retention pond? Does that go to our city sewer? It's, you know, they started digging, they started doing work. We were told in a meeting, a one-day notice meeting, that nothing could be done until this was resolved. And then, a few days later, you start digging out towards Delaware, and then you switch and you turn towards Hall. From my understanding on how this is all zoned, they started something that probably shouldn't have been done yet. So, my concerns are for myself, my neighborhood, the children, and I just think that this needs to really be reviewed. Because if there is anything toxin in that building, and if it's toxin, it can possibly be explosive, and you're going to have to use some chemicals. What guarantees do we have that something catastrophe might not happen with this building? It could explode, it could have a major fire that drives everyone in our neighborhood out, and homeless. That causes health issues to everyone in the vicinity. So, I'm asking tonight for us to let our questions that we have directed, that we have, we need them answered before any decisions are made. That's only fair and only respectful to the east side of Des Moines. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Are there any restrictions that you could define, and if placed on their inputs or discharges, that would address your concerns?
Well, from, I researched their company in Minnesota, and so, my, my biggest fear is, what type of ventilation system are they going to have in? What, what kind of, you know, air emissions is going to be released from this building? Yes, the previous owner didn't work on engines. They did decals. They put on the spoilers. That doesn't, those kinds of things, I mean, they tinted windows. So, their risk was so much great, much less than what we're looking at now. For an environmental standpoint, we as neighbors need to know what kind of chemicals are being totally used. We need it to be transparent to us, so that we have a good idea. This building is practically in our backyard. Would you want, would you want a company coming in that does restoration? And, you know, it's, from the start, we asked questions at this meeting, and we had two architects that couldn't even answer our questions, or sidestepped us. Now, if you're going to represent somebody, then you should be able to represent them in the fair manner of saying exactly what their business is and what they do. Sonicram, the Sonicram unit that they're using is a good unit, but you still have to have cleaning products.
So, I guess, is there a standard, though? Like, if they hit some DNR standard, if they say, hey, we know it's going to be this, you're non-compliant if you're there? Is there anything we can actually put on here? Because I guess the question is, would I want a business like this next to me? Yeah, I would, actually. And so, I guess the question now becomes, that's with my understanding of the inputs and discharges, but is there something we can put into here and say, hey, this is great as long as it meets X standard? What could we use?
EPA standards.
So, if it meets all EPA standards and all DNR standards, I think it affects water with us.
Yes.
If it meets all those, you'd be happy?
I would be probably agreeable with it, but I think that we can come to a better agreement in not switching it, because what's going to do to our property value if you're going to change the zoning in that area? Because my street is kind of in that area to where that zoning is going to be changed. That's going to devalue my property. If I want to go sell my home, that could cost me, you know, a loss of income on my property. And so, I'm, you know, those are great concerns to me.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to minimize, though. I do know that light industrial in other cities where it's brought in in a smart, sustainable manner actually increases valuations. You're seeing that in Vancouver and other places. So, I, I guess, I'm curious on that premise, but I do agree with you that some restrictions would make a lot of sense. And if we're saying DNR and EPA restrictions...
Yes.
And that's what has to be, and that actually addresses concerns, that sounds awesome.
Okay. I would, I would agree with that. Any other questions?
Thank you for your question. Um, no, we can hear from the next person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bridget Bakken. I use she/her's pronouns. I grew up in Highland Park, which is not in this neighborhood. It's one of the surrounding neighborhoods. I spent a lot of time biking to the Garten neighborhood. I used to, well, you can't do it now, because they changed the construction, but used to be bike, used to be able to bike all the way through Hole Avenue from the north side. So, I spent a lot of time in my teenage years biking in that area, and I am super opposed to this, even if there were to be some kind of amendment allowing for more scrutiny on the chemicals that are being discharged. And my reason for that is that, I don't know how many of us are regular Iowa Public Radio listeners, but this week I caught a piece they released on how Iowa is the number-two state in the nation for cancer rates. And further, the Iowa Cancer Registry has spent the better part of the last decade going through and documenting different cancer clusters, so certain very specific, highly suspicious types of cancer that pop up in one concentrated area. And I haven't looked at this map myself, but throughout the segment, they referred to a map of Iowa. Every town where there's a factory of any kind is a hotspot for cancer of some kind. And I realize this is not a factory, but what, something that was frustrating to me personally about listening to that article is, or listening to that segment, is that they kept repeating, well, there's no smoking gun that's pointing to one specific cause of the cancer rates. And that's all well and good, but maybe there isn't a smoking gun. Maybe there are many, many, many tiny smoking guns in the air we breathe, in the water we drink, in the soil that produces the food that we eat. I, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. And, further, the developer said multiple times that a lot of the chemicals that are used are no worse or no, no more harmful than household cleaning products. Those are the ones that are causing cancer. Tide detergent is banned in the city of New York for known cancer-causing agents. So, I hope none of you guys use Tide. And again, these are basic household cleaning products. They are not harmless, and we've been swindled by the FDA into thinking that they are. Further, during the Trump presidency, there were a series of EPA rollbacks, so the EPA does not have to test for nearly as many chemicals as they used to. So, an EPA report would not really bolster my sense of confidence that this is going to be helpful for the community. And if I can, like, if I can zoom out even further, I was thinking a lot about the service that this company provides, and, to me, this is part of a really disappointing trend, a decades-long trend of outsourcing and privatizing services that belong in our communities. If someone goes through a fire, that's incredibly devastating. A really good friend of mine, I don't know if we watch KCCI News, but a really good friend of mine, a fixture in the local entertainment industry, went through a really horrible house fire in the Sherman Hill District, and the whole community came together to help clean her items that could be cleaned, to help support her, to help get her new things. But, no offense, like, I'm sure you're a really good person with a really good mission, but we don't need these services if we have strong communities. And I really hope that you consider this when you all vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this matter?
My name is Mike Gass. I live at 2635 Boyd Street. According to Google Maps, I'm .8 tenths of a mile away from this location. First of all, I'd like to apologize to the gentleman that we did not show Iowa nice to have a proper realtor that should have said, hey, maybe we should talk to the Neighborhood Association before we purchase this building. I'm sorry, that happened. I've been in the Army for eight years. I was a correctional officer for 24 and a half. I've worked with many, many different types of chemicals and everything else. The main thing is, basically, other than the statement I just made, I just got a couple of questions. One, can he guarantee that none of those other materials are ever going to come down here, because they run out of space? The trauma, the biologicals, any of that going to come down here? I would be happy if we could share the SDS sheets with the Neighborhood Association, so we know exactly what's going on. I can read them. I know exactly what they mean. I'd like a little bit more detail, too, on the PPE that they wear when they do these cleanings and everything else. That's basically the questions I have. But back again to my statement, I'm sorry that he didn't tell you that, let's talk to the Neighborhood Association before you purchase this building. I think that would have probably solved a lot of bumps in this process.
One second, be freely. You said a guarantee on biohazards? And then, what was the second one? Sorry?
PPE.
PPE.
Personal protective equipment.
Just a quick question. Did you sign in on the sheet? Thank you so much. You can go ahead and come up and start.
Did you say goat head?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I thought you said goat head.
No, no.
This is the first time I ever got up and they said, huh, you look like a goat.
My name is Jeff Whitty. I'm president of Fairmont Park Neighborhood Association. I'll sign in before I forget. First of all, I want to say that I got a letter from a company called GTG, and it was written on February 13th, and I received it on February 15th for a meeting on February 16th. I was lucky that I had actually opened my mail that night, because sometimes I'm kind of tired and I don't open it till the next day. And I opened up this mail, and lo and behold, guess what? There was a meeting that started at 5:30 on the 16th. Well, I looked down at my calendar, and I said, well, unfortunately, I've got different scheduling things that I've got to go to. I'm not going to be able to make this meeting, but I know it's going to be a very, very important meeting. So, at that time, there was a, there was a number and a name to call, so for courtesy, I'm going to call. So, I called, and I think the person I talked to was Tyler Vincent. And so, I told him, I said, you know, this is kind of a bad situation, where, you know, you get 24 hours before a meeting, and the planning zoning meeting's the March 2nd. I mean, we could do this on next month, or next week, and still have time and get people to this meeting. And so, he said, well, we're very sorry. We had to, we had to move it forward, and so forth, so on, you know, on and on and on and on. I'm thinking, yeah, I know what you're doing. It's the first time this has ever happened to me. First time this has ever happened to me, you know. Most, most of the time, they don't want to give you any kind of time to organize the people around that area. Well, I was very fortunate because I got ahold of, of a person. And I don't have everybody's names and, you know, Fairmont Park's a pretty, pretty good-sized neighborhood association. There's 5,000 residents. Now, I don't know everybody's name and exactly their, their address, but I'm very lucky to have people that in exactly around the 21st Street, excuse me, 22nd Street, they're off a hall, and they, and they're a pretty close unit, and they get together and they talk, you know, which is great. That's what neighbors are supposed to do. So they, they were able to attend this meeting. And what I have understood was that they couldn't get their questions answered about this. And that's pretty poor. If you're going to have a meeting about something this important, somebody should be there to answer the questions. So you've heard some of the residents come and talk about their, what they're concerned about. And I'm concerned also, because when, when you're talking that area, you know, we, we have a plant that's called ADM. And they monitor the outflow of the filters and so forth at that plant. Because we have a, we have a garden school, which is not very far away, four blocks. And as they said, there's, there's over 500 students in this, in the school, and they're, and they're elementary school. So their whole, their lungs and so forth, they're not developed as well as maybe some of the, some of what our lungs are. Maybe some of our lungs are developed too much. But the concern is, yes, when you're talking about the EPA and the DNR and so forth, yes, they have, they have good programs, but they all run, run on a model. If the model is right, then it's okay. And I said, who does the models? And they said, well, we do. I said, well, how can you tell? You have to have some way of, of knowing what's coming out of that, especially if you're cleaning stuff, you have to have air to come in, air to come out. It's just all the way, it's just the way it is. So, yeah, I think that we need to slow this process down. And maybe we can come up with a solution that would work for everybody in that area. But I, I got to ask you, you know, hey, let's slow it down. Let's get, let's get together and talk about what, what can be done. You know, we'd like to have, actually, what I've been told is a mixed use, which would be great because they could do their work. And if they ever sold their building, if somebody wants to come in and put a restaurant in there, because it's a beautiful building, and we wish them luck, believe me, we'd like all the businesses we can to come in. So, I mean, if that is a possibility, we'd like to do that. So I'm going to ask you tonight is maybe to suspend this, if you can, to another time so that we can, we can get our ducks in a row and get this taken care of. And be happy to meet, meet with, with these people because they're nice people, you know? We can do something, you know? We don't need-
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. The five minutes is up.
Oh.
If you just want to-
Yes.
May I ask a question? This is just a housekeeping question-
Yes.
About the process in terms of you finding out about this and so forth and so on. At one time, I served as a president of the Neighborhood Association. And first of, and first of all, I salute you for doing it because it's, it's a job. But my question, housekeeping-wise, is this, according to staff procedures, on Feb, let's see, this specific item was mailed, this is a notification to the Neighborhood Association-
Right.
This item was mailed on February 10th, 2023, 20 days prior to the public hearing and so forth and so on. Did you receive that notification? So you had an idea that this was coming on board?
We didn't, there was no meeting on that mailing. There was not, nothing about a meeting on the, on 16th.
So you received a notification that it was going to be coming up? Is that the question?
Yes, I, the city sends a notice. So that, that notice of the rezoning from the city would have been sent 20 days prior to the hearing to, most likely you, I'm assuming you're the-
Correct.
Official contact for the Neighborhood Association. And then the applicant is left to their own means to invite folks to a neighborhood meeting.
Right.
That's maybe what Jeff is speaking to.
Yeah, that's what I'm-
It is accurate, Will, in that the first knowledge of the information would have been at least, you know, it's 20 days before the hearing.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, then to follow up, so the, the question was that your notification from the, from the applicant you felt was not received in due time?
Oh, yeah, if, if we would have-
Just yes or no is fine.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't received in due time.
Thank you.
But can I put a, an answer to that also? We had a meeting the 14th, the Neighborhood and Association meeting. If I would have known on the 13th, if they would have called me, I would have invited them to our meeting. So we have a meeting every month, and we're going to have one on March 14th also. So if, if this is something that you suspend, we'll invite them to come and talk at our meeting. That's where everything gets done, you know? You know that, Will, with, you know, being a past president, so-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I ask you, please suspend this for a while.
Are there any other members of the audience who would like to speak on this matter? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion.
And while you're doing that, can we go ahead and have the laptop woken back up and go to slide three? Thank you.
Doesn't the-
Oh, rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the applicant has time for rebuttal.
Five, five minutes for rebuttal.
If the applicant would like to address issues that came up.
Are we able to ask the applicant any more questions?
Yes.
Yes.
If he doesn't have a rebuttal, I do have some questions for him.
Right. Yeah. You can come up. Thank you.
I don't think I have a rebuttal. Other, I guess, like the PPE question, we have a safety person up in Minnesota full-time, and our safety person doesn't require us to wear any PPE during the cleaning process in our warehouse. But of course, on the site, because you could, you, there is, you know, I don't know how to say it, but like, you know, you have, you have charred and a lot of smoke and debris and things of that nature on the site, so they, they do wear it on the, on the site. But for whatever reason, we're not required to wear it in the warehouse. And I don't, I'm not, I'm not an expert in this. I can certainly get some answers from our safety guy. I just know what he requires us to do and doesn't require that in the facility.
Are there specific OSHA regulations for the work that you do?
I'm sure there's general, it would get required under general, but not specific to restoration, no.
Justin?
My guess is that it's parts per million after a fire that's in that space that requires you to do it. Yeah, I've worked in a bunch of industries, so I would assume that. That's my educated guess.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I guess my main question is, would you be for a few amendments to kind of merge the two communities? And again, sorry for the realtor not explaining to you the greatness of what Des Moines is, is our communities, which leads out to our neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So one, just a quick suggestion, I would implore you, if this does go through, to work, work with the transparency communication, definitely get heavily involved with the community, show a constant presence, and I would hire from the east side, north side of Des Moines if you can.
That, that, that would be the, for sure, what we'd want to do. I mean, we had intended to do, you know, an open house when we do finish the building. We're supposed to have 20 companies coming from all over the country. We're obviously going to have to change that situation, but we'll still end up having an open house if and when things get done, and we'd certainly be more than happy to invite them. And I mean, we, I spent a lot of money on this building. It's in an industrial area. I think it's the nicest building, really, for miles around. You know, when you sit in the office up there, you can see it, it's a, it's a substantially nicer building than, than the ones around it.
Right.
It's the only one with, you know, sidewalks and, and all the trees and, you know, it's just a really beautiful building, so.
And then, so just to finalize and wrap this up, it sounds like the concern is safety, hazards, biohazards. So I have a list of things I just want to run past you.
Sure.
If you're okay with it, the community, I would like to turn this into an amendment. So for the first thing that I would like you to do is Water Works looks at the contents that are going down the drain and give you approval. They have a plethora of scientists that study and test the water. We already have a water issue here in Des Moines, so we want to make sure there's nothing problematic going down. The second is air emissions tested and monitored by the proper, proper governing bodies, but not just the governing bodies, the educational and research institutions that set those best practices or set new standards. So that would be like Iowa State University, UNI, Drake University, or UNI. My second one, my third one would be provide MSDS sheets and for them to review and approve by the proper governing bodies or those educational institutions to make sure that what you're using is safe and won't harm the surrounding areas. And then the last one would be a biohazard review, if there's any biohazards coming down, and hopefully prevent that from entering the neighborhood. If you, would you be interested in some of those amendments? And I would like to, to get this pushed forward, because it sounds like just safety and environmental issues. I figure if we can address it with those four, it sounds like we can close up the door and make sure it's a win, win for everyone.
Can we make sure that we're clear on the cost of those? Because two of those are very expensive.
But the other thing I, I think the commission needs to keep in mind is they're already obligated to comply with state, federal regulations that exist, building code, fire code on the local level.
Okay.
So a lot of these things that we're talking about already apply and don't really need to be zoning conditions. We just need to let the other regulatory bodies do their job and the applicant do his job from that perspective.
Okay.
Yes, yes, Will.
Would you, we've heard these, these comments from, from the neighbors, of course, and their, and their concerns, both about, I mean, a variety of issues. Would you be willing to continue this item to another P&amp;Z meeting so that you could have a meeting, actually, with the, with the neighbors and share their concerns with you and answer their concerns and so forth and so on?
I mean, I'm willing to do whatever's required. You know, obviously, timeframes for us are a big thing. You know, Iowa, you guys had some pretty bad weather early in the year, so we are completely jammed up with content, so time for us is a, is a huge factor. We're several months behind from a scheduling standpoint and getting things processed. So that's certainly a challenge, so the, the time, timeframes and, and timing has been extremely difficult for us. And again, we're continuing to do all this work in Minnesota when we could be employing people here, you know? And that's really, you know, from a business standpoint, that's, you know, my concerns. I, um-
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry to cut you off. I think Todd has a question and then- Oh.
Okay. No.
Do any of the processes inside the building require your employees to wear respirators?
No.
You're registered with the Iowa Secretary of State as a business?
Correct.
If you have chemicals or anything that we, over a certain quantity that you have, do you have any that, you have to require registration with the Iowa DNR?
No.
Any with the Fire Department of the city of Des Moines?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Unless we have any other questions?
I just want to say one thing. Moringo, you may not know what that means, but I think everybody in Des Moines probably does. And that, that could be the reason for some of the concern. There was a big fire at a plant that blew up, that the owners were not transparent with what they were doing in there.
Yeah.
And it was a really bad thing. And that's where my concern is coming from. You've adequately answered my questions, but I think some of that may be, that was, that's really fresh in a lot of people's minds.
I can tell you, there will never, there won't be a cleaner, nicer facility anywhere in Des Moines. It is like, it is operated like a clean room. So, and that's the impression we want to give people. We clean things. If you come in there and you see it, that's what it will look like. It will look like a clean room.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'd like to close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion.
I had a question for the city, maybe staff. Does the purchase actually trigger off a mechanism for these institutions to get involved? Well, like, does Water Works come out and test what's going down the drain, which is one of the concerns? Does, do we have some, is there any ventilation coming off there? Do you have any ventilation that's sucking air out of the building? Because if that's, if there's no ventilation sucking air out of the building, then the air testing's not a requirement.
Right.
Right.
I mean, they have to go through, it's fine.
Sorry.
They have to go through the building code, fire code review. You know, they, just buying the property isn't necessarily going to trigger that review, but when they come in to start getting permits and, and, you know, occupancy, that's how we got involved. Again, I just reiterate, all the regulations that we could think to apply, that we've talked about, they, most of everything we've applies. Todd, I think, did a great job of kind of asking some very questions that really just kind of drove that home. The other thing, I'd like you to look at the map and just think about this as a zoning exercise. And you look to the north, you look to the south, it's zoned I-1, half of the site zoned I-1. This business model could go into the property to the south, it could go into the one to the north. The only reason we're here today is because this building happens to be split-zoned. It doesn't, this property does not extend, I mean, nominally further in to the east and the property to the south. Those are things I think we need to keep in mind. You know, we're really talking about a zoning exercise. I know we've, we're getting very specific to this use, but this is really a land use, big-picture zoning perspective, zoning decisions, property owners come and go. You pick a zoning district that you have a range of uses that you feel comfortable with. I-1 is all along this corridor. It makes sense here.
I'd like to critically support Jason and all those arguments there, because, I mean, this, this is the right place for it. It seems like the business right here is the right type of business we're wanting. I'd have a really hard, really hard time seeing how an ADM plant is consistent with what we're talking about here. I mean, cleaning industry is changing for the better. Strong cities feature, you know, significant densities of sustainable light industrial. And this project, as long as it's complying with what it says it is, is a really big net plus for us in changing and moving, especially a side of town and making more working opportunities available. So with those in mind and with the, with the scope of what we're doing, I would strongly move staff on this one, because it, it makes a ton of sense. And again, with water, water safety pieces, I know that Iowa has some challenges, but those rules aren't simple. We have a plant where water issues are a deal every single day. It's not like you just get a pass to throw anything down the drain. So, I mean, there is a ton that's already there, and I think there's already plenty of mechanisms, if they do go off the rails, that we have chances for enforcement on that. This seems like a good project, a logical location, correcting a weird thing that happened that's just odd. And I, I think staff has done a great job in considering all those pieces, so I would, again, would move staff.
Thank you, Chris.
I think, I think my only thing is how do we reconcile? How do we reconcile the community concerns? So I, I agree with you, absolutely. Fully, 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 fully agree with you. Love his business model, you know, I'm in restorative work. Love it. But how do we reconcile? Because if we vote yes today, we're going to have a body of people leaving here today feeling unhurt. So do we extend, allow for the conversation, reconciliation between the two groups, then come back and improve?
This is just my personal opinion.
This is just my personal opinion, but I do feel like he's addressed a lot of the concerns that the community raised today because there aren't the environmental chemical concerns that many of the people thought there were before this. If he's not being honest, I think he is, we'll find out, to Chris's point, because Des Moines Water Works is going to let someone know that there's toxic chemicals. So, I think the regulations already in place are going to help these people be heard. That's my opinion.
I will echo Emily's comment, and I will also add that this does not stop here. This goes to city council as well for approval. So, it's just a recommending body.
I think also the discussion is in service of the community, talking about who enforces these topics and how it's still, this project still has to live up to those enforcements. So, I think the discussion has also served the community well.
Thank you. Will?
I'm going to vote no. I think the neighborhood has the right to have a discussion with the applicant. If I were living in that neighborhood, I would certainly want to have my voice heard. And I have understood that there's going to be a neighborhood association meeting on March 14th. Am I wrong?
Correct.
March 14th, that's in less than two weeks to me. That seems to me that that's the least the city of Des Moines can require.
Okay, we still have a motion by Chris to move staff. If we can vote on that motion now, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Motion carries, but let's go ahead and get the opposite.
I was going to ask for opposed.
I'm sorry, but we had enough, we had a majority, my bad.
Okay, those opposed?
Question of rules?
Do I have to vote yes or no?
No, I think you can pass.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Let's do the opposition, make sure that Tyler had the right hand.
Opposition again. Okay, and passing. Okay. I think that takes care of all of them, correct?
Okay. I apologize, I jumped the gut. The motion didn't carry.
All right, we are moving on to item number five. Request from Chasing Waterfalls LLC for the following regarding two lots on the west half of the property of 2215 Sunset Road. And from the staff, we hope we'll have Shrioshia, Shriyoshi speak to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Shriyoshi Chakrabarti Planning Staff. The item before you is a rezoning request for a property in the vicinity of 2215 Sunset Road. The request is to rezone the property from EX mixed-use district to I-1 industrial district to allow outdoor storage, which is associated with a proposed landscaping business. This also requires an amendment to the Plan DSM Comprehensive Plan to amend the future land use classification from business park to industrial. So, this is the subject property in question. Here is Sunset Road, southwest 23rd Street. Des Moines Water Works Park is to the north, George Flag Parkway. This area is primarily light industrial in nature. The subject property, 2215 Sunset Road, is actually this entire L-shaped parcel, but the rezoning that we're talking about here is just for the two lots here to the west. That's shaded here. The property owner for 2215 Sunset Road sold these two lots, and the new owner wants to bring in a landscaping business. This previously used to be an auto body shop, so it's changing use to a landscaping business. And there is going to be proposed outdoor storage associated with the landscaping business. I would like to point out that the landscaping business is allowed within the current EX district as a use. The reason we are looking at the rezoning is because of the associated outdoor storage that is proposed with the, with the new use. So, just have a few pictures here to give you context of the character of the area. This is the existing building on the site. There's a parking lot. This is Sunset Road right here, so just another view and gives you a feel for the light industrial nature of this particular area. Again, this is the, looking towards the back of the property from Sunset Road. The applicant submitted a conceptual sketch, so this just, if you, if you're able to read through this, can zoom in a little bit, that gives you an idea generally of the layout of what is being proposed. So, this is the existing building right here. There's going to be some warehouse space, offices, and lobby slash showroom in the front. There's going to be some outdoor storage that is associated with the landscape business. There's going to be some display, and you can see they're all kind of proposed right here. And so, that is what we are looking at in terms of outdoor storage. So, as far as staff rationale with this particular request, we think that the proposed land use amendment, as well as the rezoning confirms to the character of the area. As I mentioned before, the general character of this area is light industrial. If you think of a business park, those kind of uses, so that the landscaping business is a use that is allowed within the EX district. The main concern here is the, is the outdoor, the outdoor storage and display. So, as long as the applicant confirms to the required regulations as well as the conditions that staff has recommended with, within the staff recommendation section, staff will be supportive of this particular request. And so, I wanted to move to the staff recommendation section. As you will see, we are recommending approval of the request to rezone from EX to I-1 industrial district, subject to the condition that use of the property shall be limited to the following, which is any use as permitted and limited in the EX district, as well as a landscaping business. Again, this is, this condition, this condition has been proposed because this is something that confirms to the area, the character of the EX district, as well as some of the uses that are there. So, staff believes that the uses within the EX district are appropriate for this particular area, as well as the proposed landscaping business. And any outdoor, the second condition would be, any outdoor storage shall only be accessory to the landscaping business so long as the outdoor storage is placed and screened to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. And then, finally, any future construction or development of this site must comply with all the applicable regulations within chapter 135. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting as required by the rezoning process. Here is the letter that went out to the neighbors. Here's the sign-in sheet, I believe. They just, there was just one person in attendance, and here is a summary of the, of the neighborhood meeting. I'll just pause here for a second so you can scan through this. And as you can see, the attendee did not raise any concerns and did not have any objection to the rezoning We received two comment cards in support of the rezoning. And, you know, here you can see the consent map, which shows the parcels that are in support of this rezoning request. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them at this time.
I've got one. Strategically, if I look at this area, there's really only those three sort of parcels that are north of it that are really I-1 with, yeah, I-1 in the mix of that EX. Wouldn't normally be this something that, since there doesn't look like we're moving towards I-1 down there, or are we, wouldn't this normally be something we would reject in order to enable an alternative use and a follow-up? Why in this one are we recommending approval when it's, would be sort of isolated?
The area, so here's the map showing the zoning district. You can see it's EX and the land use classification is business park. You are right, there are, there are a few parcels probably up here that have been rezoned to a limited I-1 district. And this is what the rezoning, as staff is recommending, would be a limited I-1 district because there are the staff rezoning conditions that are associated with it. So, if it's approved with those rezoning conditions, it would be a limited I-1 district.
So, what's the benefit of a limited I-1 versus an expanded use on an EX?
With the, the EX zoning wouldn't allow this particular use. We feel that, so EX zoning is a little more of a business park oriented setup or district than I-1. So, not all of the uses overlap, and this area was thought of as maybe kind of converting to those types of uses. However, we have had, as case-by-case situations come forward like this one, where you have a use that's not allowed in EX, but really has limited impact or fits in fairly well with what the thoughts are for the EX district. We've been supportive of those with some conditions. So, I think we had one not too long ago that was up, I think it was at Water Works. They're building a new facility over by the vineyard.
That was by George Flag.
Okay, so that's in this broader area. But we've used that same kind of approach where it's, you just kind of add, add in the use they want to do. Still largely keeps the notion of the EX district intact, but still allows a little bit of flexibility.
That's, I guess that's why I'm wondering, and this one's, we've had a lot of others where we weren't, I mean, is this intended down here in this little pocket to all go to an I-1? Or like, would we, like, why wouldn't we just reject, expand the use, keep the EX, since that seems like that's what the majority of this is besides for those three plots that seem slightly north of here? I know we've done it both ways. I'm just wondering, why does this one make sense to rezone in a limited way versus just expand on what we currently have? Is there a bigger plan down here than just this box?
The, I mean, that's a fair question. The, the comprehensive plan, the future land use map for this area is business park. That's the designation. So, the EX zoning district is most closely affiliated with that designation. So, the thought is, is this area, given its proximity to Fluor Drive and Gray's Lake and downtown, you know, from a big picture planning standpoint, kind of seem more business park oriented. But, you know, and this area does have some current, you know, more light industrial type uses, so it's going to be a slow, slow turn. So, what we're, what we're trying to do is just kind of, you know, make a point in time, look at what it is the applicant's proposing, think through, does that particular use, sorry about that. This is, this happens every time they're on the timer, we'll get him back on. But, to very, you know, the, the value of what we're doing is it does give us opportunity to analyze very case-by-case situations, like, and go, does this, this one new extra use that's not allowed in EX, does that make sense, both in the bigger picture context, but also the context of the specific site? And so, we felt that made sense here. If you limit the outdoor storage to just be an accessory, and you limit it to EX principal uses, and then the site plan conformance, we felt comfortable and we've done, we've done, we've used this kind of model before. So, that's how we're approaching it.
So, if this business were to sell at a future date to a business that's not a landscaping business, would they need to rezone since the property is limited to a landscaping business?
No, they would be able to be any use that's permitted in EX.
So, any other business that would be permitted in I-1 would not, would not be able to exist?
That's correct, unless it was, happens to be a use that's allowed in, I'm getting technical.
Right, right.
Some crossover.
Yep.
So, any use that would be permitted and limited in the EX district would be allowed and a landscaping business. The, and the storage component would go away because that is what is accessory only to the proposed landscape business.
Yeah, and the EX wouldn't, does not allow for outdoor storage.
Thank you. Ms. Carol?
Hi. When was that picture taken that you showed? Because I was there yesterday, and the property looked substantially different than that.
I will admit that these pictures are from Google Street View, so they're not as, they're not as current. So, as you can see, foliage, so they're probably from the...
Well, not just foliage. The site is, has a chain link fence topped with wire around it that's kind of in bad shape. And the entire parking lot is not paved. I don't know if these are questions I can ask or point out. So, I didn't know if those were things that would have to be remediated as part of this change in use.
Change in use is going to trigger a site plan, so they're going to have to go through the site plan process and bring the site into conformance of the...
Okay. I just thought it was, I appreciate you saying that though, that photo is, could potentially not be current because it ain't even close to looking like that. It's in, it's, that's kind of one of the reasons that I pulled it back off consent, because I was concerned with the state of the building and the parking lot and saying that you were going to have outdoor storage. And I just wanted to make sure that I understood how the parking lot was going to be brought up to compliance, which I appreciate hearing that. You also mentioned that it, there's floodplain regulations to deal with. Does that mean that they have to have flood insurance? And if so, if it floods, does that mean that we know that FEMA flood insurance is paid for by taxpayers? Does that mean that that would trigger a FEMA claim?
I don't think I, not answered to that question.
Is that something on the staff report?
Yes. It's, yes. It's a number, number two floodplain regulations. The subject property is located within a levy-protected area. Any future development would be subject to development restrictions pursuant to city code that under the regulations and performance standards.
I think that that's referring to the requirements within chapter 50 that relate to development within the, within the floodplain, so...
And they're levy-protected. I mean, that's not a different, you know, downtown's levy-protected.
Right. So, so this doesn't really apply? Is that what this says?
No, it, they're allowed, I mean, this, this is not zoned like flood districts. This is our zoning district affiliated with the really intense areas, but we just put in information here that's useful for the applicant. So, chapter 50 is the section of the city code that deals with the floodplain.
Okay.
And our engineering staff, by the permit and development center, apply that. So, much like when we look at, when the site plan comes in and we look at the different things, our engineering staff are going to look at chapter 50 against both the site plan, because they look at our site plans, but also any building permits come in.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just, just didn't want to encourage development if it was going to get flooded and then we were going to be paying for it. And then, just one final thing. Across the street is a big project that's presumably was approved for permits and stuff, and those guys all approved on the green map. That's really one big parcel there. Do you know what's going in there?
Across the street?
Across the street from this, I'm sorry?
PDS.
PDS is expanding? Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions?
Oh, and the business is still going on. You say the auto shop closed or whatever. It's, it was open and active as of yesterday. So, just FYI.
Yeah, it's, it's under new ownership.
Okay, but they're going to have to close, right?
Are you... Are you talking about the other, the building to the?
No, I'm talking about this
You're, you're talking about this, this particular, the auto body shop
Yes, yes. There were people working in there yesterday. I saw them coming in and out and cleaning things outside and
Yeah, we don't, I'm not sure.
So it's not closed?
I would defer to the applicant to address that.
Okay.
All right. The applicant is here. You have 10 minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie McCain. I'm an attorney at Brown Winnick Law Firm located at 666 Grand Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. I'm here on behalf of Chris Thompson, who's the owner of Just Add Water and Chasing Waterfalls. Staff very thoroughly summarized our request, although there's one thing I just wanted to clarify if I could use this for a second. On the drawing that shows where the outdoor storage will be, they're only, the applicant's looking to store its supplies on the backside of the property over here. The front part here, they're desiring to put in, you know, landscaping according with the site plan that we're going to have to do in order to make the, the property, you know, comply with the site plan and install some beautiful landscaping. The storage would actually be on the east side of the building along the backside. And in conformance with the staff requirements, we're in agreement with, agreeing to do screening as requested by the, the planning department as well. Just to address that really quick. But yes, I'm happy to answer more questions and clarify anything you might have questions on.
Okay.
In connection with that.
Any questions from the commission? Just a reminder that this is a zoning, we're considering zoning and not site plan.
If this is rejected and you're required to do alternative use instead, would that be a problem?
I believe it would be detrimental to the business owner. I think he would have to sell the property if he couldn't use it for his business purpose.
Right. If all of a sudden this is rejected as far as a rezoning, but you get, get an approved alternative use for it here, which means that you would still be able to do your business, is that a problem? Do you actually have a preference on one way or the other? Why this approach versus?
Do you mean versus the extended EX versus changing it to the limited L?
Correct. What's, what's the issue from your perspective that's a problem with that?
From my perspective, provided that we could use some of the outdoor space for outdoor storage, that's our main goal. It's my understanding that our primary use of the property as a place of operations of business, like where we're going to do our accounting and office stuff, is permitted in the EX district. And so our operations are actually permitted under the existing zoning. But because we would like to have some outdoor storage space, we are required to change it to L-1.
Oh.
I, I, I'm sorry. I apologize. I-1. If, I'm not opposed to your alternative plan, but is, our goal, as we've mentioned, is just to get some outdoor storage space.
Okay.
So right now, there's no impact on the business. You can still operate with the piece you want. The future piece you want to expand to could come with an expanded use, is what I'm understanding. Is that right?
If I'm understanding you correctly, I believe so, that we could continue our primary business use in the building under EX now as it exists. The only thing that we're asking to change it for is for outdoor storage.
That, and that is correct as to what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, oh.
Outdoor storage would just be mainly boulders and equipment?
Correct. There'd be some river rock, pelletized stone, but boulders, yeah, used in their construction of their landscape architecture.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members in the audience tonight who would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, are there any members of the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this item tonight? Or neutral? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion.
I'll make a quick comment. This is the third landscaping company, I think, at least the second one that's came to us. And it seems like this is becoming the same issue. Businesses are growing within, amongst us, and they're having issues finding the space. So we got to do something. Whether that's reclassify the business so they can operate or, yeah, frequency is increasing.
I'm very supportive of this business. It seems like it makes a lot of sense, seems like where we are. I guess I'm not a fan of the strategy. I think I'd rather do the way we've normally done it, especially since we only have three little parcels and a overarching EX space. But I guess I'd look for someone else to make a motion. I can go either way. But I would prefer towards the alternative approach we've taken before.
I will move staff.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. We have a motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay. All those opposed, raise your right hand. And pass. Okay. Any, are there any abstentions? I'm sorry, I didn't catch what, what we had. But Chris is a pass. All right.
Motion carries.
Are you guys, are you guys based out of Ankeny right now? Is that true?
Um.
Oh, I was going to say, I saw your website. Thank you for moving to Des Moines, if that's true.
Do you want me to come over now?
Yeah.
We've, we've closed this.
Yeah, we've closed the public, you can speak afterwards, I'm sure. All right. Moving on to item number six, request from TB Building LLC for the property located at 1202 Thomas Beck Road. And we have Catherine Drehos from the staff to speak on it.
Chair, members of the commission, Catherine Drehos, planner for the city of Des Moines. The property before you is located at 1202 Thomas Beck Road, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning which would allow multiple new uses within the existing building, including religious assembly, a cabinet maker, and offices. An existing e-commerce warehousing and distribution business does have legal non-conforming rights at this location, so long as it does not expand. Property is located on the south side of Thomas Beck Road in between Southwest 9th and Druid Hill Road. This property, or excuse me, this area is generally known as the South of Grays Lake area. A few photos to give you some context of the site. And then, this will be a little bit hard to zoom in on, but if anyone has any specific questions or comments I can zoom in on, but, different areas. But this is generally what the applicant has provided us with to indicate where the various uses would be located within the existing building. I don't see any hands or comments at this time. And then I have included a page from the recently adopted master plan for South of Grays Lake that was done. This was the adopted, this is an adopted element of Plan DSM that, and I apologize, I lost the date, but it was adopted by City Council on March 7, 2022. And the area, the subject property is located in an area that has been, and I will zoom in here, recommended as appropriate for redevelopment with townhomes and mixed-use projects. Generally, let's see, there aren't parcel lines, but this is the rear where my cursor's located of the existing property. And then the master plan is recommending and calling for the townhomes and more of a residential character. And so with this in mind, that is why staff is recommending denial of the request, request at rezoning and land use amendment. And then we did receive information from the applicant regarding their neighborhood meeting. And then our consent map did come back with a number of cards in support. It should be noted that a number of the properties surrounding the subject parcel are owned by the applicant. And then I can zoom back in, so you can read the comments on the card.
Yes, and apologies on that. That managed to slip past multiple ones of us. So the
request is for rezoning from NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District to EX, which is a mixed-use district. It was mistakenly listed as industrial. And then the other major typo that got passed us was that the low-density residential definition was list, that's listed as actually for the, I believe it was, Chair, can you remind me? You were the one who caught this one.
I know, I was, but I can't remember right now. Sorry.
So this is mistakenly not the definition for low-density residential. And so then the recommendation was a bit of a copy paste and a quick change. So we are recommending denial of the request at rezoning from NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District to EX Business Park.
Catherine, could you go to slide three?
Yes.
For starters. I think it's just important for the commission to see the map and see the zoning area. I mean, we did show the plan sheets for the broad, you know, the broader plan, broader vision. But the zoning was also changed to fit into that, that, that character or direct us towards implementing that, that vision. And the reason I wanted, I just want to make sure that there's a little bit of context as we talk about this property and it's specifically, and it's specific zoning. You can see, you know, across the street, we have DX2, which is a downtown zoning district. We really see the Grays Lake area as an extension of downtown. This is a, NX1 would be a transitional type use, or zoning district, excuse me, to the, you know, neighborhood to the south, N3B, which is your single family. But it's just important to understand the context and, and of that planning effort, the zoning in that, in that area. And that's the basis for why we are making the recommendation that we are.
Can you scroll again to the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Essentially, the staff recommendation is denial of the request.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any more questions for staff?
Make sure, trying to understand that just, what you just said is, so you're saying that it's because the houses that are on the other side of it are in close proximity that this would be influenced by them? Versus, or did I understand what you're meaning?
No, I was, what I was trying to get at is the broader zoning in the area. Catherine, if you can go to the sheet, that's the, the, an illustration from the, the plan that was done for this area. This broader area that you can kind of see in this boundary here is really thought of, after going through a, you know, public planning process, we really see this as an area that will develop as an extension of downtown. So a lot of the, the properties to the north of Thomas Beck are actually zoned currently, including the warehouse building across the street from the subject property as DX, which is a downtown mixed-use zoning district. And what I was trying to just point out is that the NX district that's on this subject property is intended to act as that natural transition as you move towards the single-family houses that you can kind of see in the gray there at the bottom.
Was this plan approved? Did this get passed and approved?
Yes.
So it actually is a final, it's official plan now?
Yes. This is an element of Plan DSM. It was adopted as an element.
So what's the condition of the, I mean, it's been sold to someone who wants to use it for something different, or sale is pending? What's the?
My understanding is the applicant has purchased the building. The sale is final. He'll have to speak to that to clarify and confirm it. And then he is looking to expand the allowed uses within it. So there are a number of uses that have gone into it and, and are not compatible with the allowed uses within the building.
Yeah, it has non-conforming rights to certain types of uses, and he's been adding, some of which are, you know, like more assembly uses.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. There are no further questions from the commission for staff. We can move on to the applicant. Thank you, Catherine.
Hello, Stephen Roney with TB Building. I'm from 1202 Thomas Beck Road. And I purchased the building last year in July. Before then, I rented it from, well, right before then, I rented it from the bank because it went into foreclosure. But before that, I rented it from the, the owner, Marty Binsken. My business didn't utilize the entirety of the building when I purchased it. This is also my first time in the real estate world, so just give me a little grace. But I ended up purchasing it. And so I was thinking, oh, I need to fill up some more of this space. Just, I've never been in debt that much in my life. And so I was like, let's get these bills paid. And I, I had a guy that was interested in putting the cabinet shop in there. And so I rented out part of the, part of the warehouse to him. And then he took a little of the office space in the front. And then office space is really hard to rent out right now, or at least it was last year. And so I had a church that just asked me if they could rent out part of it. And I was like, oh, yeah, it'd be great. Then I figured out that I'm not zoned for that. And I kind of got the car, the horse, cart a little bit in front of the horse. So my appeal pretty much is just, I, I did sign some leases. They're in there right now. And so I don't want to kick them out. Understand that I did things wrong. Probably should have had a better realtor as well. But at the end of the day, I'm just trying to figure out a way to make this all work so that, like, we can have a nice, a nice business there that, I think it's a really good-looking building. If you look across the street, if you look around, there's another commercial building to the, to the east of me. And I know there's zone NX1 as well. But we're kind of right down on the edge. And so my plan would be, is if there would be any appeal, that we could potentially just transition our section at the end out of it, so we could do business down there. We're right by a, a bus stop. We employ people from Des Moines. I have the distribution warehouse kind of e-commerce operation in the back. We employ about seven, seven to 10 people, depending on the time of the year. And we look to grow that. So I did have a neighborhood meeting, and the neighbors were pretty supportive of what we were trying to do. Some of them weren't really super excited about five-story buildings right there. But at the end of the day, we just want to be good. I grew up five minutes from there, down on Park Avenue and 73rd Street, right on Park Avenue. My parents went to Lincoln, so I'm pretty familiar with the south side area. And want to be good, a good property owner over there. But just want to really try to make sure that I keep a little bit of income coming in and I can pay the, pay everything associated with it. Open to questions?
Any questions from the Commission for the applicant?
So, of the uses you described, is the building then filled with those leases? Or is there still residual space that's going to get filled with other uses?
There's still 7,000 square feet of office space.
Okay.
In the front. But, once I knew that I had to rezone, it was kind of, could the, you know, put that down and wait to see what we can put in there?
Yeah, do you know, I mean, this can be a question for Staff. Do you go down if you don't know it? But do you know which, which uses would be able to be non-conforming uses as you sit and which ones are not? Like, what's triggering this?
Yeah, so, I have a, I got a letter from all the past uses of the building, and I think it was before there's some new uses or how they're defined. And it was manufacturing, obviously, it's 20,000 square feet of office space, so there was office, manufacturing, and distribution inside of there from the printing press. The Printer Inc. was the original owner.
Thanks.
Is there, just maybe the question for Staff, is there another way to do this? You know, we've done that in the past.
Yes, and, and I think maybe this is what maybe Chris was getting at with the previous item. I do think the use variance where, where the rezoning is denied, you can't ask for a rezoning. I do think that this is a case where you have a building that was built for a certain function, but you have, obviously, on the long-term, you know, the city's land use plan and zoning are really set up to guide development on a very long-term, beyond the life cycle of this building. So, it's, and that's why it's important for us to really think beyond the moment and the situation. But, that's also why there's the opportunity to go to zoning board adjustment if you are not able to get rezoned and, and ask for a use variance. I do think that with the invest, you know, that there is, I think the case could be made that there's hardship here in the sense that there is a existing building for an industrial nature. And I, I do think as a, and as planning staff, I would feel more comfortable having, you know, going down that route, that, that path of, of a use variance, because it could be really tied to his specific model. And it doesn't, and it could also be tied to, like, the life expectancy of this particular building. So, that would be what staff would prefer.
So, that means procedurally, we need to reject this to give the opportunity, because of state law, to go in front of the other board to ask for the, for the use. So, the end goal is, we reject here with the hope that in a few weeks, we're still operating fine, business still good, community members still there, right?
That's a very high, yes, generally, that's correct.
Could I say something real quick?
Sure.
That's what I understood, too. Like, this is the first shot, and then you go to the, the City Council, then, then you really get the yea or nay. My hope was to shoot, make the first shot, so I don't have to shoot the second shot, so then I'm not in that bad spot. Even though I know there's always a chance the variance could get approved, but I know there's also a chance it could get denied.
I think, I think the hope was, it was, so, this is one that we see a bunch of times, and some people don't actually understand it. I think we got some nice calls one time by one guy. I think in your best interest is us rejecting this to give you a better path next. It's just a state law thing we have to do in order to make sure you get a shot in the next one, if I'm understanding correctly.
Part of the process.
It's, it's in the, the code. I mean, it's in the city code that that process is laid out. I don't off the top of my head if that's just a duplicate of, of the state code, but I, I think that's beside the point. The, the notion of that is so people don't just skip the process, try to skip the rezoning process, which is where you should start and go straight to asking for variances. I, I will say, though, that there are times where you're like, well, you know, and, and that's why, you know, we always kind of refer to it in this manner of, well, you know, you got to go through this, and, but you really need to go do that. But there is a purpose for it, but anyway.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any members of the audience who would like to speak in favor of this item? Come forward, state your name and address, please, and sign in when you're done. You have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Trey Wilson. I live at 1235 Davis Avenue, which is adjacent to our property line of butts, the TB Building's lot line. And my wife and I are strongly in favor of the rezoning, reverting back to an industrial type of use. And a couple of reasons why. One is, we do want to have the business stay profitable so that they can maintain the building. It would, for us, it would be awful if the building, again, went into foreclosure or went vacant, and so we do want to have a profitable business running there. The other thing is that the, the EX, I guess they're industrial-type, light industrial zoning pays more taxes than a residential. So, I would like to have it revert back to that industrial type of zoning so that we have a stronger tax base. Also, the, the other thing is that we have lived with the TB Building for a while, and they've been very good neighbors to us. They're very, it's a very neighborly, neighborhood-friendly business. And so, I have no qualms about Steve running that business, bringing in a neighborhood-friendly tenants. I think it'd be an asset to the neighborhood and to the city. Additionally, other points, oh, just, you were mentioning about how planning and zoning plans for the future. I see the trend that we're going to have cities that are much more walkable, much more bike-friendly. And so, again, I, I've worked with, oh, some of the city projects in the past. I'm a field biologist, I've worked with wetland delineations. What I've seen is that we have large industrial areas zoned in the city, large, some larger commercial, we have our box stores. But if we're going to be trending towards a walkable, bike-friendly city, we need to have decentralized industrial, we'll call them workplaces, whatever you want to call them, industrial and commercial areas that are along a bike trail. And this is what we have here with the TB Building situation. It's close to a bike trail, people could bike there and do their architecture practice there. There's a restaurant nearby, so there's food and entertainment, there's Confluence across the street, Confluence Brewing. And yes, there can be, according to that plan that's up there on the screen, there can be residential buildings off to the west, but there still needs to be some little, in this little community here, some area for commercial and industrial. Those are the points I wanted to make. Do you have any questions, please?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Michael Kramer, 2240 Southwest 11th Street. I own that lot as well as lots 13 through 16 of Butler's Place, the two southeast lots adjacent to Stephen's property in question here. I would echo what Trey, or Tree said. Stephen's been in the property for three years, great tenant, forthcoming. I'd like to see more localized businesses in our neighborhood for job opportunity. I think it's great that the church has moved in, we noted that. The cabinet manufacturer, didn't even know they were there, they're quiet, they're respectable, I live on the top of the hill. Don't notice this business in operation, love what it's adding to our community. I would prefer to keep it zoned industrial, light industrial, to keep this neighborhood productive for our neighborhood mix. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Francis. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this item? Okay, is there anyone who would, here who would like to speak opposed to this item? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the Commission for Discussion.
I'm, I'm a little confused about how this particular building goes from being a sort of existing precast structure that looks like it's, you could probably survive, it could probably survive a really long time, to someone buying it and paying to knock it down and paying to build townhomes there, and for that to be a financially sort of viable strategy? I don't see that in the foreseeable future, and I'd be inclined to rezone to allow the building to be retained and, you know, used in this use. And then, that precast building's going to last a long time if maintained, and you can imagine adaptive reuse of it could be a lot of different things.
I agree with, I agree with you, and I think, you know, the, the really great possible outcome for this neighborhood is that some of these strong pieces of fabric would get transitioned and that it would actually be a unique space in our city that came together with some of these components that survived from previous uses and then had a community built up around it that was largely as the supporters described. So, I'm, I'm kind of worried about us putting through to, to say it's a zoning board of adjustment call every time they want to put a different mixed use in here. And that it would be better to make this, to back this property up as a, as a viable use now. In reality, if, if market pressures ever do push it to getting demolished for residential, then that developer will come in and ask for this, and they'll have no problem getting it passed, because it'll be, you know, have a mixed-use neighborhood around it and residential behind it. So, I don't think we'd really be blocking this plan, and I think we'd support a better outcome.
Did you want to say something, Justin?
I disagree. I agree.
You, oh, okay, you said just agree, it sounded like disagree, but, okay, you agree. Thank you. Okay. Is there any more discussion or movement for a motion?
I've moved to grant the request to the applicant.
Okay, that's the motion? Oh, sorry, the motion is to grant the, to grant it to the, to the applicant to amend the Plan DSM from low-density residential to business park and to rezone it from NX1 Neighborhood District to EX Mixed Use District to allow the multiple uses. And A would stay the same? I'm sorry.
Yes, basically, yes. Basically, you're recommending approval of A, B, and C.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
No, the request.
Approval of the motion?
So.
Approval of the motion.
No, that's, I'm sorry, on the agenda. The headings, the request is A.
Right, no, the mo, the motion is to, is to move A, B, and C. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number seven, a request from Splice Farms LLC regarding property located at 3109 Hartford Avenue. Sriyoshi is, is going to present from staff. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Sriyoshi Chakravarti, Planning Staff. The item before you is for property at 3109 Hartford Avenue. The request is to rezone the subject property from F Flood District to A Agriculture District to allow the construction of a hybrid agricultural building which supports some existing farm and equine operations. This is also accompanied by a land use amendment request from parts in open space to development reserve. So, this is the subject property, it's an irregular-shaped parcel, it's about six acres in size. It's along Hartford Avenue, it's to the southwest of the Des Moines River, and it's, it's in the flood plain, as you can see from the zoning classification. It's, it's right at the edge. On the other side of Hartford Avenue is PUD and N2B zoning. So, the applicant here is proposing to place a building within this parcel. This is just an approximate footprint of the building that was provided by the applicant. It also doesn't indicate the precise location, but gives us a general idea of what they're proposing to do. But, the building is going to support some of the existing farming and equine operations that are associated with this particular farm. So, the building is, according to the application submitted, would be roughly 20,000 square feet. It's going to be a multipurpose building, and the applicant is proposing a few different things that the building is going to serve. It's going to serve for farm vehicle and equipment storage, there's going to be garage space to do repairs, there'll be storage for feed and supply, as well as optional equine stalls and riding space. So, there's a few different uses that are proposed with the, with the building. There'll also be a concrete floor portion of the building, which is expected to, to include a restroom, and will also include insulation and, and heating as well. I have a couple pictures here. This is Hartford Avenue, and here's the subject property. Another view of the same area. Just open farmland for now on, on this parcel that, that we're looking at. So, the, the main concern that staff has with this rezoning is that we're looking at rezoning from, from a flood district to a agricultural district, which is going to allow the uses that the applicant is proposing. So, in order for staff to support a rezoning from the F Flood District, one of the criteria is, is that the area that is to be rezoned has to be brought above the FEMA-designated base flood elevation. So, the information that we currently have from the applicant does not have some of those details that staff looks at while evaluating this, including the base flood elevation, and a plan or a design that shows how the applicant intends to bring the area where the building is proposed above the base flood elevation, how much filling would be required, what sort of design would be needed to flood-proof and so, so on, at least at a conceptual level. And the other thing that staff also looks at is once, some of those details have been determined, we also like to have a legal description of the area that would be brought above the base flood elevation with, with the filling. We did reach out to city engineering staff, they provided us some rough numbers. So, again, this is not confirmed by an engineer through the applicant. But according to city engineering staff, the base flood elevation on this particular par, parcel ranges from 786 to 792 feet approximately. And based on the precise location where the applicant wants to site the building, the land might need to be raised as much as nine feet. And on top of that, there's also a three-feet freeboard requirement for the floor elevation of the proposed building that would need to be elevated. So, it could be as much as 12 feet. So, it's a significant amount that we are looking at, but So it's a significant amount that we are looking at, but we don't have the final numbers or any, any other details to make that determination. So at this time, based on this rationale, staff is recommending denial of the request to rezone from F flood district to A agriculture district until such time that the applicant is able to come up with a plan to raise the, and can show that the, the property that the rezoning is being proposed can be raised above the base flood elevation to the satisfaction of the city engineer. And with that, a legal, an accompanying legal description of the area that would be raised above the base flood elevation. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting. There were very few parcels in the vicinity of this particular site. This isn't within a designated neighborhood association, but is within 250 feet of the Riverwood, Riverwoods Neighborhood Association. And I did hear, I do not have anything written from, from her, but I did get a phone call from her and she expressed support for the, for the rezoning. She and the neighborhood association did not have any concerns, so I just wanted to note that in my presentation. We also did not receive any comments back, so these are the consent maps. And with that, if you have any questions, I will be happy to take them.
I guess my question is, so nine feet, that's, yeah, that's, that's a lot of material. Are they able to elevate the building, like put them on poles? Is that, is that even possible? And then my last question was, oh my gosh, yeah, that's a lot of dirt. What happens if we do approve? What mechanisms take place when it does flood? Is there, is this like a prevention mechanism and can you explain that?
So the, because this is within the flood district, the Chapter 50 requirements apply. And so even if the property gets rezoned, the, the city engineer will not issue permits until the applicant can show that the Chapter 50 requirements are met. So that safety mechanism is there. However, staff has a policy, when we're looking at rezoning, we are essentially rezoning the, in a situation like this, we are rezoning the entire parcel. And so there are other uses allowed in the A district, including residential dwelling unit. So staff has concerns when, when approving a rezoning such as this. We want to have some specific details before we go the path of rezoning, which is why we want to know what kind of a plan the applicant has. It's not enough to say that they will meet the Chapter 50 requirements. We do want to have some basic engineering plans in place that these are the things that need to be done in order to meet the Chapter 50 requirements and this is how the applicant is going to meet those requirements. So those are some of the details that staff looks at.
We also, if I could add to that, we also, I, Shriyoshi mentioned the need for a legal description. When we would support something of this nature, it's going to be based off of where actually they can show that they're going to comply with Chapter 50. We don't want to rezone, rezone an entire property when we know they're not going to be able to put 12, nine, whatever the feet of fill across this entire parcel. And so part of the exercise that we expect an applicant to do is to figure out their plans enough to know where exactly on their property they're able to achieve compliance with Chapter 50 and then only rezone that area. And right now, we don't have that information. We just have a request to rezone the entire area. So that, that really in a nutshell is why we are recommending denial.
So there's a pathway for him to be able to use it, but you have to see it specifically being applied to where that building is essentially?
Right, we need an actual thought-out plan and then a legal description associated with whatever that project area would be.
Okay. And then my last question, sorry, everybody. Could they just throw a shed on there? Without the plumbing?
Are you asking if there's a type of building that is allowed on flood plain?
Yeah. I don't, anything is going to have to comply with Chapter 50. Now, you know, certain sheds don't need building permits, so maybe it gets put out there and nobody knows, but Chapter 50 would apply to any structure.
Okay. Thank you.
So how is that building that's part of that picture built there?
The pre-existing buildings?
The one that's right there to the, on the, on that shot, right there?
I believe those predate.
The flooding?
The zoning district, yeah, because, yeah.
So they also own the parcel across the street, right? Do they have the same, like, do they have the same problems that they wanted to build over there?
Yes.
This one right here?
It's all, I'm asking, is it all in the flood plain? Or flood zoning?
Yeah, it is, it is all in the flood plain.
And it, I mean, even, even if we rezone all this, they're going to have to, they're going to have to do this exercise anyway. So why, our point is, we should rezone more than what we know you can actually do.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, thank you, Shriyoshi. The applicant is here. We have 10 minutes.
Do I have to sign it?
After you, please. Just say your name and address.
My name is Abel Gutierrez, Splice Farms LLC, which is just the entity that owns our farm. On those maps, what you don't see is that the property is actually 284 acres made up of nine different parcels. And this is one of the parcels that, where we wanted to go forward with this project. We farm 174 acres, soybeans and, and corn. And then we also board horses. We have about 40 or 50 horses out there. And currently, the facilities that we have are kind of inadequate. We don't have any space to park equipment, like Shiroshi said, tractors or anything like that with, with concrete foundation. That metal building that you see on there is actually stalls, but we move horses out of there just to, so we're able to have some type of covered area to park equipment, put feet and that sort of thing. So it is necessary to have something out there. I mean, we were obviously able to operate without it, but moving forward, it would definitely be something that would help us be more efficient and, and be better out there. Trying to think. And obviously, when, when I first saw the report and it said, you know, that they were recommending denial, I was, I was a little bit taken aback, but it was probably because a little bit of my rookie-ness as a developer, which I, I'm not. I thought first, we asked for permission and then I started spending the money for the engineering and, and it's, and I, I would, I would assume that there was checks and balances along the way if we got the approval. But my first step was, or our intent was to try to get permission to see we could go forward with the project. And we did that and the city did a great job kind of coaching me through it, but I was always confused as to what next step was. And by the time I knew it, I was already on the agenda. And then, so then I'm here. But we did, we did engage an engineer, an engineering company here in Des Moines and so obviously he gave me a little bit more guidance of what we need to do. Those numbers that she shared in terms of the elevations there are, could be accurate, could be not. Here, looking at the old topography maps, we think it's six feet below the 100-year flood plain, so you'd, you'd be in that nine foot or less. Since we've owned the property, it hasn't flooded out there, but there's a lot of pictures and a lot of people that board with us that has shared that, that part of the property is one of the higher, the highest ground on the property closer to the railroad. So I'm sure with a survey and professional engineering work, you know, we'd be able to figure out exactly what needs to happen out there. And then in terms of the feasibility, you know, the engineer we engaged, which is Wally Pelz, did not see any issues either raising the ground if that was the necessary, what we needed to do. It's not a building that is going to have a lot of high-value improvements in the property. Foundation, bathrooms, framing, and half of the building was designed to have, or the way we're envisioning it, half of the building would have foundation and then the other half of it would be dirt, dirt foundation, just primarily used for storage, potentially add some more stalls or use it as an indoor riding arena. So even if it flooded out there, there's, I'm not concerned about that. I mean, the property has been flooding for the last 50, 60 years. And yes, it causes damage, but there's not a whole lot of improvements. There is a farmhouse out there already and it seems to, again, it hasn't flooded since we've owned it, but it, it, it seems to be above the flood plain or it's never really, water has never got into the property. So who knows? But for us, it was a very simple process. We need to build a shed. We tried to figure out if we're going to do it, do it right from the get-go so we don't have to keep adding to it. And so we tried to follow the process as best as we could and here we are. But I'm open to suggestions in terms of the procedure part of it, which is what I was not, you know, you know, very in tune with. So whatever gets us to that is something that we, obviously we want to be compliant with the city. And with that, I'll see if anybody has any questions.
Jason, it seems to me this is all premature. There's no plans or.
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend that if the applicant's interested, you know, just continue the item and, you know, I would say indefinitely to get, you know, to give him ample time to do, engage with Wally a little more and then we can renotice it and put it back on the agenda when he's ready.
I mean, I think he needs to agree to that.
Can I, can I ask specifically, so my, my, part of my frustration, even though I was very happy the way they were helping me out, was specifically what was needed, you know, because at some point I said, well, do we just need to know what the elevation is out there? You know, it would be a mark of the elevation that we would really figure out. Do I need to, you know, have a foundation plan? You know, so it was always what comes first because if, if the permission is going to move forward, you know, it's probably 15,000 or 20,000 dollars just to retain a, an engineer for what he wants to do, or at least that's what he said, maybe, maybe, maybe just on the safe side, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly what it is that you and Wally discussed as a scope and what all components of that were and exactly what Wally's, if Wally's understanding of what is being asked for is what we're asking for. So I, I can't say if, that that figure is accurate or not to what we need. But what I can say is that we need enough design information to have a confident sense of this is work, our engineering staff will look at it and go, yep, this would, we believe this is, you know, within, you know, within reason and error that this will comply with Chapter 50. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be like a 100% submittal for permit-type document and then a legal description associated with that because that would be what we would actually rezone, not the whole property.
Yeah, and that, that I didn't understand because, I mean, we were asking for the rezoning. It doesn't matter to me as long as the project moves forward, but I thought, well, even if the whole property is rezoned, even if you wanted to develop it, you're going to have to meet the Chapter 50 requirements.
The key to remember is that the flood zoning district is there to support Chapter 50 and the goals of keeping development out of those areas. So we're not going to take away that zoning unless we know that you can comply with 50 because then it'd be totally, at that point, we might as well not have a flood plain zoning district, so.
So Jason, if he does secure Wally as a, as a design engineer, he would have access to go meet with engineering and then determine the scope.
Yes.
So, you know, if you're willing to continue this and take that step, then you can lock in your fees with your designer and things, you know, and align everything. So I think what, maybe the point of it all.
Yeah, and I think that was, that was.
If you can take that, then, you know, then you're on track.
Yeah, and I think the fear for my wife and I would be to spend, and design work, engineering and everything, and then show up to the zoning or whoever the proper authority is.
I think what could be done is you have a, is you bring Wally in for like a scoping discussion meeting with staff where, I mean, we talk about that and then Wally will be able to give you a turnaround and say, I believe this is what it's going to take me to do. I think right now, all the conversations have been you with staff and you with Wally. So I think everybody needs to be brought in together.
Okay. So, yeah.
Okay. So are we saying that you, he would be open to a motion to continue for like a month or something?
She recommend indefinitely continue?
Indefinitely.
And then we will renotice it whenever it's ready to come back.
I would be for that because I don't know how long before Wally can even help me out with it and that sort of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll make a motion to continue?
I haven't closed the public hearing yet.
Oh, sorry.
Just, just to make sure, there's two people here to speak on it? No? All right, thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Go ahead, Johnny.
I'll make a motion to continue the item indefinitely.
Okay.
So the second?
Second.
Everybody knows.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes.
You were correct. A director's report I do have.
Okay.
Nine o'clock. That was, yeah, 14:00.
All right. We have a director's report?
Yeah, I just want to remind the commission that our next meeting is on March 23rd and it'll start at 6:30, so it's a little different because of spring break. It's going to be the fourth Thursday of the month, not the third. And then it'll be a little bit later due to a scheduling conflict with, for the space. So again, March 23rd will start at 6:30, just a half an hour later than normal.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.